Good evening. I am calling to order the March 9, 2020 Menlo Park Planning Commission meeting. Roll call. Let the records show that Commissioners Tate, Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, and DeCarty are present. Absent this evening is Commissioner Cale. Reports and announcements. Under reports and announcements, staff and commission members may communicate general information of interest regarding matters within the jurisdiction of the commission. No commission discussion or action can occur on any of the presented items. Good evening, Ms. Sandmeyer.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. So tomorrow, the City Council will receive a report on Menlo Park's tenant relocation assistance program administered by this Meriton House and provide direction on next steps. That concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding reports and announcements to staff? Seeing none, I'll progress to public comment. This is general public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed on the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and your address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So what this means is if you are here tonight to give public comment, and the public comment you wish to give is not an agendized item, now is your time to fill out a card, send it up, and I will call you for public comment. If you're here to give public comment on a specific item that is on the agenda, rest assured when that item comes up, I will call for public comment specifically for that agenda item, and you have an opportunity to speak. Having no cards and seeing no one coming forward, I will close general public comment and move to consent calendar. This is E1, approval of minutes from the February 10, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Riggs.
I'll move approval.
We have a first from Mr. Riggs.
I'll second. I have some corrections to the minutes.
Yes, thank you. So any revisions, please add.
Okay, so now?
Commissioner Doran, yes.
Okay. Yeah, the first, I had some corrections to the minutes, the draft minutes from February 10. First one's on page 14, the first paragraph on the page, I think it's six lines up at the bottom of the paragraph. No impact fees in ADUs less than seven, should be 750 square feet rather than 700 square feet. The other ones are really just minor, but since I'm doing this, I'll give you a few more. On page 15, about 12 lines up from the bottom of the first paragraph. He suggested it might be good time about some two-story ADUs. I think a couple of words are missing there. A good time to think about some two-story ADUs. And similarly, on the next page, 16, first full paragraph, first line. Commissioner Tate said regarding an empty program, she agreed that it had, I think there's a "to" missing there, had to be well-defined.
I'm sorry, that's second paragraph, second line, is that correct?
Sorry, no. First full paragraph on page 16.
Okay.
First line of the first full paragraph.
Commissioner Tate said, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Had to be well-defined.
I got it, okay.
And then my last little knit on page 17, the last full paragraph, not the carryover paragraph, the last line. Things that were clearly in the planning commission's purview, I think after purview, there should be "and" things that were not. So I think we're missing an "and" thing. That's it.
How do we do on those, Ms. Sandmeyer?
We'll update these. So if a commissioner can make a motion on these revised, adopting the minutes with the revisions.
Great. You're clear on the ones that Commissioner Doran called out?
Yes.
Great. So we've got first from Riggs with revisions from Doran. I think Commissioner DeCarty had his light on to move for...
Yeah, I would second with the revisions as stated.
With revisions as stated, Mr. Riggs?
And the maker accepts the revisions.
And the maker accepts. Seeing no further comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor as presented the minutes, please raise your hand. The records show Commissioner Tate, Doran, Riggs, Barnes, and DeCarty, all voting no, all abstaining. Commissioner Kennedy is abstaining. The minutes are approved as revised. Progressing to F, public hearing, F1. This is the first item this evening. This is a use permit for 130 Baywood Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential District. As part of the project, one heritage Japanese maple tree in the front yard is proposed for removal. Good evening, Ms. Medor.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I don't have any changes since the staff report was published, but I believe the applicant's here to give you a brief introduction of the project, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Great. Any questions for staff, clarifying questions related to the report? Seeing none, I'll call for the applicant to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Lisa Wellman, and I am the owner and principal designer at Plan A Design Group, which is located in San Carlos. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about our project. The proposed project at 130 Baywood Avenue consists of a new two-story, single-family residence with four bedrooms and four baths, along with a new in-ground swimming pool. The existing single-story residence with detached garage will be demolished to make way for the new home. Due to the location of the property in a FEMA-designated floodplain area, the new home will need to be built at a higher floor elevation than the surrounding homes. Covered porches with horizontal siding at the ground level and a ground-level garage with lower offset wall heights have been designed into the project to break up the larger massing which results from this higher-floor level requirement. The new home is situated on the site in the same general location as existing residents, and the new pool is located in the rear corner of the side closest to the existing detached garage wall along the property line. This location provides an added buffer of privacy from the pool area to the living outdoor areas of the adjacent properties. A modern farmhouse style will allow the home to have a contemporary feel while respecting the traditional residential neighborhood of the neighborhood. This style consists of whiteboard and button siding with dark divided windows and matching fascian gutters with a dark composite shingle roof. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay close. Let me first ask for any clarifying questions as it relates to the project from my fellow commissioners. Seeing no clarifying questions, I will stay close because I'll call for public comment, then I'm sure we'll have some other questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. So if anyone would like to give public comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward and having no comment cards, I will close public comment now. Bring it up to the dais for Commissioner discussion. So first disclosure, I am social acquaintances with the owner of the property, Mr. Mulugan, and, but that will not color my decision-making on this particular item. So with that said, I think the project is very well-done. I think the integration into the neighborhood from an aesthetic standpoint works well. I think they've endeavored to bring back the second floor, to modulate the design. I think the garage, while a front-facing two-car garage, is well-integrated into the house. The porch, the covered porch extends a little bit beyond the garage. So based on the aesthetics, based on the conformance to all the development standards, the setback of the second floor, the use of the materials, it is a perfectly approvable project, and I'll look for any other Commissioner discussion. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I disclose that I'm social acquaintances with the owner as well. I do actually have one clarifying question about the location of the pool. You said that it was designed so that it was next to the garage, I believe, on the left as you were looking, but it looks like it's equidistant from the property line on both sides. So I guess I didn't understand that placement of the pool in terms of the privacy point that you had raised, if you could just clarify that.
Thank you. The comment about the privacy was the adjacent neighbor on the left, that there is the, it's not next to the house, it's next to a garage on a detached, an existing detached garage on A1.A. You can see the adjacent neighbors on both areas have, on the right, there's an ADU structure, and then on the left, they're both.
Yep. That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further questions or comments.
Thank you. I will make a motion to, I am making a motion, to approve this project as per the staff report. Commissioner Kennedy?
I will second.
We have a first from Barnes, a second from Kennedy. Looking for any other Commissioner comments on the project? Seeing no other lights on, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving this project per the staff report, please raise your hand. The records show that is Commissioners Tate, Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, DeCarty, all voting in favor of the Commissioners present. That's unanimous. Congratulations. Build happily. Thank you. Proceeding to the next item on tonight's agenda, it is F2, use permit for 106 Baywood. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing two-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Mr. Pruder. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As an update, the applicant has prepared a perspective drawing facing the street frontage that has been provided for the dais and also at the back table. And in addition, the applicant has also revised their landscape plan and planting plan, sheets L1 and L2 also provided at the dais and the back table, to reflect the addition of three proposed western redbud trees that would be located in the property adjacent to, but in the rear, the rear-facing property that's also owned by the property owner, not in the subject parcel. And I'm here for any other questions you have. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, for the purpose of clarification, what we got up here was, we got a color eight-and-a-half-by-eleven street view of it.
Yes, that's great.
Okay, great. So any questions for staff, clarifying questions related to the staff report or any of the materials that we have for this project? Mr. DeCarty.
Just on the new color street view that we have, just to clarify, the segment that's on the left in the first floor that is coming forward, it appears to have an angle on it that you could interpret was actually sort of an angled part of the construction. From the plans, I'm assuming that that's actually has something to do with the topography of the site? Or just help?
Yes, I believe that's correct. This property is in the flood zone, and so it appears to have this particular sloping feature because of the raising of the floor plate and general building features for the face-line elevation requirement.
So the way to interpret this is it's still right angles, essentially?
Yes, that's correct.
Just for clarification, Commissioner DeCarty, your light is still on. Are you, great. So any other questions for staff before we proceed to hear from the applicant? Seeing none, we will proceed, I will proceed to call for the applicant to come up and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Tebow, Director of Development for Thomas James Homes. This proposed home located at 106 Baywood is a 2,331 square feet, modern-style home that we're proposing with four bedrooms, three baths, and a two-car garage on a 6,038 square foot lot. We have designed it in a modern style. We feel that it'll fit nicely into the neighborhood. We noticed several properties around our rebuilding, and so we really feel like this is going to be a very nice addition to the neighborhood with high-end materials. We have done stucco as well as siding. And also, I'd like to point out that although we didn't get any comments from any neighbors, we did take into consideration the massing of the home. We are in a flood zone, as was stated previously on the other project on Baywood, but we did make sure to reduce plate heights during the design so that we are at a 26-foot, 6-inch total height. And we've also increased second-floor setbacks throughout the front and the sides to reduce massing as well. Open to comments? Questions?
So I have a question. We saw a Thomas James project, or two, I think it was, last meeting, and we had discussions about outreach, and there were discussions about outreach and lack thereof. I look at E2, which is the project description, and in the final paragraph, it says, "Beyond our initial mailings to the neighbors within 300 feet of the property, we have not held any meetings, nor have we received any comments from neighbors to date." Tell me your understanding of what your responsibilities are as it relates to outreach and how we came to this.
Yeah, so when we do purchase a property, once we have possession of it, we actually do have somebody go out and knock on doors and provide some information as far as who we are. We also put our fencing up, and we have our contact information on the fence so they can get ahold of us through several different means. We have sent out our plans to the neighbors in the area, and so far, nobody has reached out. But if we do have any comments or anybody that wants to get ahold of us, we are 100% accessible, and we try to accommodate any neighbors' comments or concerns.
Yes, thank you. And do you, generally speaking, when a homeowner has a project and they do the knock, which is, "Neighbors, how are you? This is what we're contemplating. Here's a set of our plans." What's your recordation? How are you record-keeping on? I talked to, you know, Mrs. Smith over here at 104 and Mr. Jones over here at 116. Are you keeping any recordation of that?
We don't unless there's a concern, and then we do keep record of what the concern was from who and what we did to accommodate the concern. But if it's just kind of, if they're happy with it, or if it's just a conversation where they didn't have any concerns, then we typically haven't, but we can.
Well, let me, thank you for that. Let me go to staff here. Mr. Pruder, are you counseling applicants to make notations of the outreach that they do?
We advise applicants to provide details on their outreach efforts, and so we don't give exact, precise direction on that, but we do recommend trying to contact by door-to-door, by mailing, and by other forms of outreach if necessary.
So you don't explicitly say, "Hey, the folks that you're talking to, make a note"? That's not the direction that you give?
That is correct. We do not do that.
You don't do that? Okay. Interesting. That's certainly different from instructions that I had when I was doing my project. Explicitly different.
Through the chair, sorry. Just to clarify, we do ask when we receive word of outreach, what that outreach consisted of, and so we do ask the applicant to clarify and elaborate on that, but, you know, we don't necessarily direct the applicant on specific approaches to that. We just want to make sure we document everything they do, and so we make sure we have a clear record of what the outreach was.
Sure. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Any other questions for the applicant before? Wait, I'm having a, I'm having a little brain loss here. So did you explicitly discuss the, did you go through the property? Have you gone through the architectural details of the property yet?
Yes.
You have? Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just blanked on that. So what I'll do is, with no specific questions as it relates to that, I'll check in for Mr. Riggs if it's a clarifying question. If not, I'll go out and call for public comment. Mr. Riggs?
Yes, thank you. It is a clarifying question in that on the landscape plan, I don't see any perimeter trees. On the survey, I see on the left side a couple of 3-inch caliber trees adjacent to the house and shrubbery on the right. So is that correct that you are not proposing any perimeter tree planting?
If you go to page L2, we are actually proposing adding some trees. We are protecting and keeping one tree existing on the property. We are planting a new tree in the front as well as in the rear, and then we actually added on our lease...
I'm sorry, what was that sheet again?
It should be on L-2. The planting plan.
So you're talking about the 1, 2, 3 trees in the back, 2 trees on the right?
Correct. And then 1 in the front, as well, to the right of the driveway is also a new tree, and we're protecting the 1 to the left.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no other lights on, I will ask you to stay close. I'm going to call for public comment, and then we'll have more Commissioner discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to call for public comment on this item. If anyone has public comment they would like to give on this item, please come forward, fill out a card, pass it forward. Seeing no one coming forward and having no cards, I'll bring it back up to the dais for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Riggs?
Others have heard me say this more than once, that I particularly admire modern architecture. At the same time, I think it has a higher hurdle than so-called traditional forms, partly because of the dominance of the parapets, you know, as opposed to the attic height, and partly because of the relatively austere finishes, and then certainly because a neighborhood such as the Willows was largely developed in the 1940s, I believe. And it is by far dominated with traditional styles. So with those three extra hurdles, it behooves the architecture to be particularly good. I'll admit that I am a little uncomfortable with the large shed roofs left and right, and that's why I asked for the front perspective to get a sense of how dominant they were. Although I don't know that this by itself is a reason to deny the project, I did want to point out that to, it is difficult to make the conclusion that this particular design is harmonious with Baywood Avenue. And I had a couple of specific observations. One staff is very familiar with, and that is an elevated stair window. And by elevated, I mean that a landing is by nature approximately 5 feet, a little more in your case, elevated from the first floor, and that when people walk down the stairs, they have little more to look at than to look out the window at an angle at the neighbors' first-story windows. This in turn, besides being a privacy issue in general of itself, it does make us turn to the landscape plan, and it does not appear that any attention has been given to the neighbor's privacy. Staff has probably told you that this is virtually always a concern here at the Planning Commission when a two-story house enters the neighborhood, even if the neighbor is a two-story house. And so, well, that's a concern. And then in general, the rather high, white stucco walls of this project do call for perimeter planting. And so I am curious, through the chair, perhaps I could ask the applicant, would be curious whether you are agreeable to side property line planting.
Yes, we are agreeable to privacy plantings on the side. I would like to ask a question, however. In the past, we've been told that I believe we're only allowed to plant privacy plantings up to 6 or 7 feet in height, and so I'm a little bit confused with that.
You might have actually gotten a response about fencing when you were asking about planting.
Okay.
To my knowledge, you can plant a 40-foot tree if you can afford it, and nobody comes forward with gasps.
Okay.
And... And is this something that your landscape architects would take a look at?
Yes.
All right. And you've worked with Gomez Design before?
Yes, we have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for any other commissioner comments or motions?
Well, I will make a motion then, to approve the use permit per the staff report with the additional condition for property line planting on either side of the structure where it is in the vicinity of, not necessarily just directly across from, but in the vicinity of the neighboring properties, which it appears from the area plan is pretty much the whole length of the new building. And these would be plantings designed for the purpose of privacy screening, with particular emphasis on privacy on the left side of the, either side of the stairwell, to be reviewed by staff.
And in terms of the type of plantings, were you looking to specify shrubbery or...?
Thank you, yes. And Mr. Pruder probably knows I would be looking for trees of, we should probably establish some phrase like, capable of reaching the height of a diagonal between the 2 window heads within 3 years, or something like that. But I suspect that staff knows the intent, and I would be happy leaving it to staff to judge whether the height and fullness of the trees would be appropriate.
Mr. Pruder, are you comfortable with that direction?
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Riggs. To clarify, it may be a little difficult to possibly put trees in that specific space, given the distance between the building footprint and the fence. But we'll definitely look into that, and we can pursue that option, and obviously work in collaboration with the city arborist as well as the applicant.
I think you bring up an excellent point, in particular with regard to the bay on the left side. Oh, that's the fireplace. I have to say that I think the planting is potentially of real importance to either the present or future neighbors, and that a way needs to be found to fit it in. And if the setbacks are insufficient for planting, then perhaps we should reconsider the site plan.
So, Mr. Pruder, that creates a hurdle in terms of a subjective judgment for the adequacy of the plantings. And should, in your opinion, there not be adequate space to achieve what Commissioner Riggs is having as part of his condition of approval, coming back and redoing the site plan is obviously not a small matter. So, knowing that, I'll re-ask the question. Are you comfortable with that condition? Or said differently, do you think staff can accommodate your review?
Sure. We could definitely look into this with the city arborist and with the applicant. And I think the other point that we'd like to bring up is that, you know, we could also look into some kind of like stairwell-window conditioning, or something else that can, you know, kind of affect the window and glazing along that side of the property as well.
Which is a favorite of Mr. Riggs as well. So, we don't have to come back again on this. It's an opportunity out of Plan B, or do you just want to let it ride and see what happens, and then potentially come back again?
That works for the stairwell window. That is a different question for Bedroom 2, which has to have egress windows on it.
Although they could be translucent?
That's true. They could be translucent Bedroom 2 windows. So, I thank the chair and Mr. Pruder for the feedback. I think that if trees cannot be fit into the plan, and I do notice that there is what appears to be, well, no, I guess those are walking paths with a gate. I was thinking that's quite a big storage box. That those 3 windows would be treated accordingly, as, in lieu of tree planting. That solves the privacy. I don't know that it solves the issue of the large, white stucco walls with traditional homes adjacent. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to address that. I cross my fingers that this is not, this does not come out to be a neighborhood issue.
Question for the applicant. Why did the applicant choose not to merge the subject, the 2 subject lots?
Well, really, we were just going to do some basic plantings back there. We weren't going to build anything, and so, we didn't really feel the need to merge the lots.
A question to Mr. Pruder. Is there any future development potential on the rear unmerged lot?
Without being merged with another larger lot, it's virtually impossible. The size of the lot is too small, and given the setback requirements and required access, it just didn't seem like it would be possible on its own. It would need to be connected to some other lot and then merged.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first from Commissioner Riggs, which, and I'll restate this for clarity, Plan A is for the plantings. Plan B is for measures to create privacy amongst the windows. And staff will, at its own discretion, try to go with Plan A. Plan A doesn't work, go to Plan B. And it would seem that Plan B, if Plan A doesn't work, Plan B, you're going to be able to do it, because you'll be able to add privacy windows to whatever needs to happen. So that answers that question. Are we okay on that?
Could you please clarify if it's for both sides, or just the left side of the house at this time?
It's my understanding. Go ahead. Yes, both sides. The stair being on the left side, and the Bedroom 2 windows being on the right side.
So we're specific, to reiterate, we're specific to stair on one side and Bedroom 2 on the other side?
Okay.
Looking for any, I'll go to Commissioner Kennedy.
I was going to second.
We have a second from Commissioner Kennedy. And before I call for a vote, any other additional commissioner comments on this project? Seeing the lights on, I'm going to call for a vote to approve the project with the conditions as put forward by Commissioner Riggs and seconded, the project, the motion from Commissioner Riggs with the conditions and seconded by Commissioner Kennedy. On favor, please raise your hand. As the records show, it's Commissioner Tate, Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, and DeCarty, all voting in favor of the members present. That's unanimous. Congratulations. That moves us to item F3 on this evening's public hearing. This is for a use permit at 1800 El Camino Real. This is a request for a use permit to operate a massage therapy business in an existing multi-tenant commercial building in the SPECR/D, the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. The proposed use is a conditional use in the El Camino Real mixed-use land, El Camino Real mixed-use land use designation. The proposal also includes a request for a use permit for a change of use on a lot that is substandard with regard to parking. Mr. Pruder, since you're still sitting there, I will say good evening again, and I assume that you're the lead on this project as well.
I will say good evening again as well, and yes, that is correct. And as an update, there was one public comment that was provided over the weekend, which I forwarded to you via email, the commissioners, I should say, and also provided a copy at the dais and at the back table. And we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Commissioner DeCarty reaching, not reaching. If anyone had any clarifying questions for staff as it relates to the staff report, Commissioner DeCarty, you were reaching.
I was. So on the staff report, on page 3, in the second paragraph under Parking and Circulation, it says, "The Transportation Division has also reviewed the project, determined the proposed project would generate 1 additional peak hour trip." So, in wrapping our heads around the concern about parking, I would love to understand how that determination was reached, if you have any more background on that, number 1. And related is, does that also, that 1 additional peak hour trip, are those considerations based on the fact that there are empty units that exist right now, or is that based on full occupancy in some way? So I'm trying to understand what the baseline is, that this 1 is above and beyond as part of the answer, if you have any illumination.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner DeCarty. The specific transportation demand management measure here that we're speaking of is referring to a measurement of PKR trips that are added as a result of the change of use for the suite. So, it was looking back at the previous suite use, which was a non-medical office, and its conversion, proposed conversion to this particular use of massage therapy is what is resulting in this proposed 1 peak hour trip additionally.
Okay, that's helpful. One more question?
Chair, please.
So then, the proposed way to address this is a transportation demand management plan that would reduce by that 1 peak hour use. Am I correct on this? And that the way to do that is to offer $20 a month? So it's a, so there's $240 to do that. And it would be only for 1 year, and not linked to the use for the lifetime of the use? Can you, I guess, help me understand how $20 a month gets somebody to reduce peak demand by 1 car, and what happens after the first year if it's successful?
Also regarding that item, the methodology, we'd worked that through with the acting transportation manager in the Transportation Division. So, we talked through what the TDM guidelines could require, and this is one such item that is provided. And it's based on the C-CAG requirements. And this is from the county's, the city and county council of governments. And so, we worked through that with the applicant, and this was one of the options that they could take. And it is for 1 year, but that is based on the requirements that the counties put forward.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Seeing other questions, I will proceed to call up the applicant to tell us about the project. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tom Olson. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Yuen Wing, which is regretfully not able to be here. She's at work. She's currently at 718 Willow Road, where we have a current massage therapy practice. And it's been in existence for at least a year and a half now. And our project and our goal tonight would be to acquire the general use permit for 1800 El Camino Real to extend our work there. It's an extension to where, what we're doing now, so we'd like to discontinue that. So, it's a bodywork, foot reflexology, serving our community, helping the people around us feel more relaxed and stress-free. So, that's the general use permit request at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I have a question. Could you walk us through your understanding of the parking requirements for this site, what you intend to utilize as parking for the site, how it's going to work for this particular location?
Yes, Commissioner. The parking obviously is an issue on El Camino Real, no matter where we go. It's basically, we're facing that as a community. So what we would do was incentivize our employees, which would either, as stated in the project description, be Ubered there, be driven there on other means, public transit, and not use the spaces that are appointed for the property for their general use, for their parking use throughout the day, through their time working. So, there is some discrepancies in some of the concerns that were brought forth by the neighbors. For example, we would never be normally at full capacity. The time that our customers do come are usually off-hours. So, they're from 6:30, 7:00 to 8:30, earliest 4:00, 4:30 to 8:00 in the evening. And we only have space for 4 people at one time, at given one time, patrons there. So that, the parking would be adequate for that. And staff, staff employees would not park there or nor on the street as well. So that's our recommendation.
So as I look at the plans, there's 13 spaces. And number 6 is the handicap space. How many of those do you intend to use, recognizing that, you know, you're a paying tenant in the building, and you have rights to those? Is it a function of your utilization of the spaces being what you perceive to be your pro-rata share of the square footage of the entire project, the entire building, or first come, first served, or what you're thinking around? How many of those you would, how many of those you would fill, and how many you would perceive to be, you know, gratefully usable by your business?
Thank you for the question. So, ideally, we would probably use no more than 3 or 4 at max, and specifically for our customers. Now, given the fact that another part of the building is empty, we don't know what type of business will go in there, and they could occupy much of the space at times, so leaving us without parking for- and they could occupy much of the space at times, so leaving us without parking for our business. Like I said, there's, the off-hours for our customers are such where they're not going to be competing for businesses, assuming the other businesses would be there during normal hours. They would be there a little later, 5:30, 4:30, 7:30, 8:00. So after the business is closed, which would open up the spaces that are presently or currently, or would be maybe not available during the time.
And then there's the parking issue, then there's the, so what we're being asked to vote on tonight is use permit for massage therapy use on a lot that is substandard with regard to parking. And then a use permit to allow a massage therapy in El Camino Real Mixed Use Land Use Designation. And you touched on it a moment ago, but say again, if you would, why a use permit for this use, which requires a use permit, is the right thing for this El Camino Real Mixed Use Land Use Designation?
Why I believe it is?
Yeah.
Well, I believe it is because we're serving the community. We have multiple current clientele that come to our spa, Seven, on Willow Road. Families, parents, couples. So we're an extension of wellness to our community where there is high stress, frustration, fatigue. And so providing this space for them to come where it's absolutely 100% legitimate business, where they can receive wellness and some sort of relaxation and even therapeutic recovery as they come to us and they leave makes, just for a better experience within our community. So it's, the idea is to continue our work where we are to a different location, serving our community.
I drive by your location on Willow Road all the time because I live in that area. How many square feet is that location?
That's a good question. Think maybe 1,700, a bit more, yeah.
And this location is, how many square feet?
It's 12, 11, 11, close to 1,200.
Okay, yeah. So it's smaller. Do you recollect how many spaces you have at your current location?
There are seven.
And do you have a sense of what your utilization of those spaces currently are?
Not at capacity. It's always hit and miss, so it's less than half the capacity. Yeah. We have, we have parking in the back and we have front parking.
Got it. Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for staff, for Mr. Pruder. First, I believe personal services are permitted?
Yes, that's correct.
Could you give us examples of what qualifies as personal services?
Sure, we have examples such as barber shops, beauty salons, and laundromats, for example. Those, those could be typical examples of personal service.
What was that third one?
A laundromat.
Laundromat, okay. And then we've had a letter about overflow parking that is not just on the public street, but that enters into private residential, a private residential area. And apparently, it was an ongoing problem with full occupancy of the building. How does, how does the city enforce? From a planning perspective, we're saying the parking should be accommodated by the designated spots, which include parking on, in the public right-of-way. But how do we enforce parking on private property outside of park, the public right-of-way? Is that burden entirely on the property owner to monitor and regularly call the police?
So the property owner and the tenants need to work together to enforce that and inform their customers and ensure that parking is being adequately addressed, in terms of violations?
Is that another way of saying the property owner and tenants have to call the police?
In short, it could result in that, yes. But not necessarily. I mean, it could be some dispute or something that's neighborly or something along those lines. It's not necessarily the case that it escalates to a place.
To go up and request that they don't?
Right.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
So a couple of things. I know that at the corner of Stone Pine and El Camino, there is a private personal training gym with significantly less parking. And right adjacent to 1180 over here, there's the EZ supermarket or whatever, it's the Fine Wine Store, Netwell Fine Wine Store. It seems to have not enough parking for that use. So this, one, sort of thinking about parking, but I happen to go to your spa on Willow Road and I think it's great. I'm hoping that you're going to keep the great pricing that you have at that one, at this one. It's great. And that, I think it's a, I personally bike to and from that one, from my house in Alad Arts. And I think that the closer that you are to downtown, the folks who are coming are coming from this particular neighborhood. So it would be likely that they would, they might use an alternate mode of transportation or bike, go by foot to get there. I think it's an appropriate use. I think it's a, I think it's a, you're an existing business owner in the community and I think this is a great way to support the successful business that you have built. I think that your business is very well-managed. You, the staff there are fantastic. It's the kind of business that I think we want to have. And supporting the expansion of existing small businesses that are not massage envy, that are not chains, I think is what we're supposed to be doing up here. So I just wanted to say that I would support the, this use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, and I will say, I haven't called for public comment yet, so it'll be a clarifying question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned in your presentation that you, I think you said incentivize employees so that they would come by a means other than a car they would park and mentioned they might come by Uber. How do you, how do you do that? Is that a certain set stipend or how do you make that happen?
Thank you for the question. So we would inform staff that these are the options. We would prefer you to come. And we'd incentivize by paying half of Uber fees. We've done that before. If someone wasn't able to take some other mode of transportation, they could take Lyft or Uber or be driven by other staff members, carpooling. So it's basically educating our staff with the alternatives of transportation.
So it's pretty much, say the phrase, so it's education I get, which is great. And then there is a financial incentive that you also use? And is that, is that sort of ad hoc or is that structured in some way?
Well, it would be structured in the management and the teaching to the staff. And then also, the reality is there's limited parking on El Camino Real. So hopefully, in the near future, maybe within five years, there would be some sort of a paid parking structure that the city could develop and build like San Carlos has off of El Camino Real where there's free parking on one side or metered parking. So eventually, I can see the city moving in that direction where they could park their cars and either walk there. Currently, they would just be carpooled and then we'd have to find a place to park those vehicles, a vehicle, for example. Incentivizing is paying for a parking permit issued by the City of Menlo Park to park elsewhere downtown or other metered parking areas, day-use parking permits.
So I guess in general, I would love the idea of incentivizing so they take some other means of transportation than a car and then parking a car. But that's not really the point. I guess my question is, would you be amenable to something that was more specific? What we have right now, I think, is if we approve this, would be $20 a month for one year, so that's $240. So would you be amenable to actually a longer duration and some stipend that actually, depending on where your employees come from, you know, the cost of an Uber ride
Is costly.
takes care of that in a hurry. So I'm trying to understand the hardship to you if there was actually something that was more prescriptive in terms of duration and also seemingly more reasonable to actually get the incentive the right way, building on your education, to actually have one of your employees who would in fact not come in the car to make up for this increase of one net peak hour trip as defined by this report? So is that something you would be amenable to, or how much of a hardship is that on you? To increase the amount of payment to help support that switch and to do it for more than a year?
It's reasonable. The hardship does come if the business isn't doing well, obviously, to incentivize that. But we're committed to the 12 months, as we stated in the proposed project, to at least minimize the one-hour peak time, one-hour peak that was issued. Moving forward, it would be something that we're open to developing. And hopefully, with the evolving of our parking dilemma in Menlo Park and up and down the peninsula, there would be some other alternatives that would arrive that we could also be part of, of directing our staff to park elsewhere. That's the, that's something we have to face as a community, is where do we park? There's development going everywhere up and down the peninsula, or excuse me, El Camino Real between Atherton and Palo Alto. So parking is an issue, period, but we want to minimalize it. And we feel that our business is small enough that it won't make such an impact on our community or nearby streets, just due to the fact of the size of our business. There, there are only four spaces where we can service four customers. So ideally, again, the parking would most likely commence after hours, after hours meaning 5:00 PM. So most of the spaces would be available then, I'm presuming. Other than that, we would, again, I would incentivize and my partner would incentivize those to carpool in, park down the street using a paid city permit, daily parking pass. At this point, that's the most reasonable thing we could do, besides just saying, just come park and fill up, you know, fourth of the spaces and let the overflow go. We're not that type of people or establishment, so it's a work in progress, to be fair. It's a work in progress and we do want to resolve to make it win for, for us and for our community. By no means do we want to impede on our neighboring community with that, not at all. And it's already an issue. We're not even in the building and they, they're already having a parking issue. So we're trying to change that through our proposal. And then hopefully, the city will also come up with something else for the community in the future. So it is, it is an issue. You're right.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Riggs.
I, I heard you say that you only have four locations, but you have five rooms and five training therapists in the application. So are we talking about four customers at once max or five?
Mr. Riggs, the, there are four rooms. The fifth room there is, I just noticed that, that was an area of the architect. That is basically our staff rest room where we do towels, we have supplies. That's the last room, which I think is number five, in this drawing, so there are four rooms there. There are three for individual use and then one for a couple use, which would mean two people in one room, so.
Oh, and that explains the fifth massage therapist.
Possibly, yes.
Okay, that was another question. And then, thank you. And then through the chair, another staff question. The way this incentive works, clarify a bit for me. $20 per month is available to someone who presumably takes alternative transportation. What happens if no one opts in? Where does the $20 go?
The measure is an option and so it is expected that it would be used for someone. And if someone is not available, no one opts in, then it wouldn't go anywhere and potentially that measure would not be applicable in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
So just for clarification, it is feasible, right? That if you didn't have enough parking for staff, that staff could go back and forth between the two locations, perhaps parking at the Willow Road location and then Ubering to the El Camino, correct? So that's another benefit of having a second location proximate to the first. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely, is one suggestion.
And let me ask you this, because we're really drilling down on parking. I mean, you are a lessee in this building. You have a right to a certain amount of spaces. Could you not front-run this whole discussion by saying, "I want X amount of spaces dedicated to my business" out of the 13 spaces and they become your spaces and then we stop talking about it? I mean, how, is that something you had contemplated?
I did not contemplate that. It goes to the optimism and my flexibility of being part of a community and knowing that my experience in my current business, that the hours are usually later than normal business operating hours, by 30 minutes, 45 minutes or so. So in my mind, I would just almost say first come, first served. But I'm, with the experience, knowing that our customers usually come 4:30, 5:30 on, which normally supplies ample parking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no other lights on, so I'm going to call for public comment on this item. And I do not currently have any, thank you, stay close. We'll, may have some other questions after we bring it back up to the dais. Thank you for that. I'll call for public comment. If anyone has public comment on this particular item, please fill out a card and come forward. I see no one coming forward and I currently have no card, so I'm going to bring it right back up again. So I'm closing public comment, bring it right back up again for Commissioner discussion and potential action on this item. Commissioner DeCarty.
So I think the use for me is completely fine. I really appreciate understanding and learning more about your commitment to the community and the current use on Willow Road. So the, the broader concerns about parking are not your problem. The building's underparked for the potential use. That happened at some point historically in this mix. So I can appreciate that that's not your issue on one level in this. I don't mind actually things being underparked because that in itself is an incentive for people to take alternative transportation. The problem is when it leaks into other places and ends up disrupting neighborhoods and that's a problem. But I'm also appreciate the staff report that the net delta in the problem here looks like it's one trip during peak hours. And also have no reason not to believe that you've got a use that is not often in peak hours in that whole kind of mix. And with all of that, I do think that the proposed TDM alternative right now is inadequate. And so I would certainly support this, but for, I mean, I'd almost rather there was no TDM plan than to say $20 a month for a year is actually going to solve the problem. Because I think it's just a terrible precedent. And I can appreciate that it's meeting something that's been designed from another agency that says this would be potentially reasonable, but that's, that's just meeting some standard that in application is clearly not adequate for what the reality is of this community. So I'm all good with all of this, but I do not like the TDM as proposed and would like to see something that seems more reasonable or aligned with both the specifics of the use, which means that this additional one doesn't look that onerous, but that actually gets addressed in a way that you might actually incentivize somebody not to bring a car and to substitute for something else.
Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Riggs.
I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner DeCarty on both fronts. One, that the building and its historic use is underparked. And there was probably some logic back when it was built, a logic that apparently is still embraced in Palo Alto. About all that I think it's fair for City of Menlo Park to ask is what staff has defined is to address one extra car trip. But I have to agree that at twenty dollars a month, it would, it would just be very hard to change one's habits for twenty dollars a month. I don't think I'd even spend the brain energy considering it. So I think an alternative proposal is necessary for the TDM. I also, while I understand it may be an acceptable formula to address an issue for one year, and perhaps there was the logic that that gets someone introduced to public transportation and then they realize, oh, it's not just gasoline, it's maintenance and insurance, and I should have done this a long time ago. With the rotation of staff, I just don't know that that's viable. And I just don't see that the one year is a, is a solution to a neighborhood that hopes to be there and viable for a lot longer than one year. That said, I also want to say that I think the use is easily approvable in comparison with a hair salon, for example, which is a social event. And I can imagine that between 10 and 2, every chair is going to be full in any successful hair salon. That unfortunately, massage is not a social event and doesn't exactly draw people in in groups that I know of, through my limited experience. So the only reservation that I have is on TDM. And I would look for a recommendation either from the applicant or staff, something that would be more persuasive.
Question to the applicant. I'm sorry, did you need a, did you want to go through to the, did you want staff to respond to that? If you would like, certainly. If you want to put a pin in that, your discretion, what would you like to do?
I think it would be appropriate to hear from both the applicant and staff of how this might be achieved.
Perfect. So if you'd be so kind as to address Commissioner Riggs's request.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I'm, I'm open to alternatives. I'm, I'm obviously operating out of the limited experience that I have in that area and the parking, which I entailed wanted to become more mastered of. But with limited space all around, the best thing I can do is really incentivize my staff to take public transit, park down where there is ample parking, paid parking, permit use parking, and then have them come that way either by foot or parking at our current location on Willow Road as well and then being driven and dropped off. I'm very open to the ideas from the commission of what alternatives that we could utilize in resolving this issue, at least specifically for that suite. That's addressing our issue, but it's not addressing the, the larger issue of the parking problem. It's just addressing a minor issue there that I'm very open to.
Well, you're speaking to the choir, Reverend.
I didn't know, thank you.
But I would, I would sort of line out permit parking from your suggestion. I think the city is actually trying to pull back on that until there is a place to put employees. So can we talk specifics a little bit? How would you persuade a massage therapist who is typically three minutes late every day that he's going to change his transportation format, spend a little more time, but not have to use his car? How would you be more persuasive than twenty dollars a month?
Parking is an issue, yes. By no, no means am I a psychiatrist or a psychologist. However, I think given the current location that we have, having them park there and then being driven over in one car would resolve that for a period of time as we work collaboratively with the city to find other alternatives that are more meaningful, not only to staff, but for everyone involved. Having people anxious and stressed on trying to find a place to park when they need to be at work is a dilemma I think most people face. It happens all up and down every day. So ultimately, that's our best option. One of the best options is to have them currently park where we are on Willow Road and then being driven over.
And there's no parking issue on Willow?
No, there's not. We have our own parking space there. The only issue with Willow is it's a two-lane road with an island down the middle of it. Yeah.
On behalf of Mr. Riggs, Mr. Pruder, do you have any thoughts as it relates to, perhaps you want Commissioner Riggs to restate his question, or did you hear it?
I have an understanding. I think the broader question is concerning, are there alternatives here? Is there an expansion that could be made? Kind of what else can we do regarding this particular TDM measure question? Is that exact right?
Right, the broader question specific to this particular project.
Right. So we could, you know, discuss some of the other measures that are available. We, you know, in this process with transportation and with the applicant, we, you know, presented the various measures available, some of which I think we would argue are more rigorous and more, you know, would affect a broader number of spaces and it really doesn't, sorry, a number of peak hour trips. And it doesn't really equate apples to apples to one peak hour trip per day. And so you have some that can help, you know, bring down maybe 10 peak hour trips. It's just the magnitude is, it varies for some of these measures, but we're welcome, we welcome a discussion on that. I mean, we can, we can discuss that in more detail if you'd like. We could talk that over some more. And sorry to also clarify, this is part of the MMRP for the downtown specific plan. And so it is required that a TDM is provided. And that is something that is enshrined in the MMRP. It's, it's one of the mitigating factors for that document.
So with the desire to move this project forward, one would hope tonight, what, what could we rely on that would address a single, a single additional car trip with some more confidence?
There are a few other measures that are more physical, such as bicycle parking and shower areas for bicycle riders. But we had discussed this before with the applicant, and it was determined that it's a little difficult in terms of being a physical constraint to achieve that in such a smaller suite. And so that was something that was discussed before as a possible alternative to this particular incentivizing measure.
Has anyone discussed the efficacy of twenty dollars a month?
So we did discuss this with the acting transportation manager in Transportation Division and with staff in planning. We, you know, understood that these are the measures and, sorry, these are the guidelines that are based on the TDM guidelines that we have created for the city. And this is kind of becoming more of a policy discussion. So I feel that perhaps that can be something else to consider and have a broader discussion on that. But it is kind of limited based on the measures that have been created through the city's measure document.
My response is that if the city is limited to its toolbox, then to move this forward, it might be, it might be up to the applicant to persuade a couple of us that you can move someone into alternative transportation, given that twenty dollars a month is not persuasive.
I think there's a question to the applicant, if you choose to respond.
Yes. I really feel like I'm limited to, to my options besides incentivizing. I feel like I'm limited to my options, given the fact that I've already proposed incentivizing the staff, paying, paying them to come to work, basically, is what I'm being asked to do. I'm asking them to pay to come to work. And then there are 13 spaces, which I am entitled to have as, as a potential tenant. I would be given the right to have those spaces. That's fact. Thirdly, we have a space at 718 Willow Road where we could park our staff there and be literally driven over by another staff and dropped off to work. There is public transportation, there is Uber. I don't control people's lives. I'm doing my very best to minimize my impact in a negative way in the area that I wish to do work and increase the overall effectiveness of community wellness. So given that I've come to the table 100% of what I can do, I would like to ask if there are further discussions available, let's talk about alternatives. I'm definitely open to learning more about what I can do as a small business owner to not increase traffic flow or congestion. I'm completely open. And if there's something that I'm not aware of, I'd rely on your experience, the choir director, as you labeled yourself, to enlighten me on what else I can do, because I feel very limited at this point with all that I've had to offer. I feel like I'm at the limit of my expertise or understanding of the situation.
I have to say, I, I think you're offering more options than either any of us or, or the city has to this date. And if you're willing to make that part of the use permit approval, I think that certainly shows more than good faith. It shows a response that is likely to be successful. So would the carpooling from Willow be part of your application then?
If, if it's a requirement, if I'm being asked to do that, I mean, that also creates a hardship too, you know, with, it just creates a hardship. There's no easy way to do that as well. Logistically, someone's going to have to be responsible for driving staff when they get there to, to their, so that's creating another issue as well, a broader issue. So we're trying to minimize the stress on staff and we're trying to maximize a limited space and also be respectful, respectful for our neighboring communities, which we have. So we're really limited with our options as a small business for parking.
Well, I understand, but I don't want to lean too hard on the phrase hardship. I mean, a dollar a day for 240 days is not something that undermines a business. And that's the only proposal on, in, in this application. And if that would work, I think that would be ample, because it qualifies for the city. The, the trouble is, and, and I would like to hear others on this panel speak, but twenty dollars a month does not seem persuasive in order to get the job done. Carpooling does, but if you're uncomfortable committing to that, then the third option, perhaps you can put forward. I'm trying to move you forward here tonight, rather than send this back for consideration of a redesigned TDM. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Mr. Riggs, with all due respect, I, I don't understand what you're wanting me to say. I, I really don't understand what you're asking me to. Do you want a, a daily log of me driving staff to the, to the new location? I, I'm not really, honestly, I don't know what you're asking me, asking of me.
I would hate to get into the specifics of how you document what you do, but any more than how you would document that you gave twenty dollars a week to Jerry Sanchez. I, I'm looking for a program that is something we can have some faith in that logically would remove one car per day. And this is not a huge thing. This is not 13 cars per day. This is one. But as long as we're here, I thought we'd try to make it work, rather than just gloss over it. And I'd love to hear from some other person up here.
Who was first? Commissioner Kennedy.
Okay, so, you know, this, this conversation has now gone in the circle. And I think that the burden that we are putting on you as a small business owner who is doing his best with the information that he has at hand, with the rules that the city has given him, to reduce one car off a very small business, I don't, I think that we are not do, I think we are doing you a disservice, actually, right now, as a commission. We don't, you know, we, we didn't make the rules, the rules are the rules. And you're working with, within the, the framework that the city has given you. You know, I have, you know, I think that we should, I would be happy to make a motion to approve this project and then send you back to planning staff and work on figuring out with the resource, the financial resources that you have said that you can commit, if there is some additional wiggle room, to potentially subsidize one employee all the time, or the manager who runs a space, and that person is the one trip, one car trip that comes off the road, that you subsidize that, so that they take an alternative mode. I do agree that twenty dollars per person per month for a year isn't going to get nobody anywhere, right? So I think that we, you have shown tremendous effort in working with, within the rules to wanting to expand your business. I can't wait till we have a bigger project and we tell someone they have to remove 27 or 30 or 40 trips a day. And I hope that we spend a significant amount of time, as we have done with you in this moment, because then I will be really happy. So I, I am going to make a motion that we approve this project and that we ask that as part of this, that you work with, with staff to identify a solid TDM plan that, that isolates one full-time employee and you have subsidized that person's trips.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I would echo and thank you for the time you're spending with us on this and appreciate your openness and, and the constraints that Commissioner Kennedy outlined. I actually think, and I appreciate the, the sentiment about how to find that solution. I'm not sure that solution actually works particularly well. I don't know how, how the staff would actually make that happen, given the constraints we just talked about. So on the table is a TDM plan that is twenty dollars, that there's no enforcement. And if nobody uses, you just leave the dollars on the table anyway. And there is no enforcement. So I, the only enforcement ends up being if somebody wants to call the question or come talk to you about it and then go to the city and say, hey, this isn't happening in some kind of way. And so to be specific, I would approve this. And so to be specific, I would approve this if there were two things. One is that you do the $20 a month and you would do it for the duration that you hold the lease, as opposed to one year. And then the second one is that you write into it that you are also going to work so that you are utilizing the parking in both of your projects in order to mitigate the impact of the parking on the El Camino project. And if that's written in and that becomes the TDM plan, then at least it passes the sniff test of that it's linked to the duration of the lease and it also calls out that you have this alternative. Now, if somebody wants to come and say, you're not enforcing it, they at least know it's been written down and they can have a conversation back with the city that says, they're not running a car back and forth between these two things and I don't think that's right. And that takes you out of having to write a letter every month and anybody else having to come back. And I think in the principle of this discussion and the burden on you, that feels reasonable to the issue at hand. And I think also taking the time on this is reasonable because there are neighbors who are really frustrated that because it's underparked, they end up with a bunch of folks that could end up in their driveways. They're not here tonight. It doesn't mean that those impacts aren't there and we're trying to navigate through. So that would be my proposal, is to approve with those two things. One, the $20 that goes for the duration of the lease. And the second one is the staff acknowledging the connectivity between the two parking to mitigate the one that has the greater demand and then the one that doesn't.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCarty. That was a motion. That was a motion.
Thank you. Checking back in with Commissioner Kennedy, yours was not a motion, is that correct?
Mine was a motion, but I would amend, I would defer to the amended motion.
Okay, we'll hold on that. So we have a, we have a first from Commissioner DeCarty. Condition number one is the $20 a month goes for the duration of the operator's lease. And that's one $20 payment per month. The second piece of that is for an agreement that looks to cross-park between two sites. Is that correct? Okay. I'll check back in with staff. Cross-parking becomes hairy because if, for instance, they lose a lease on the other site, then you have no certainty of that. We've seen that before. I see you nodding your head. That wasn't a leading question. That was my thought. Is that, am I correct in saying that? And I don't mean to dispar, don't mean to, well, just answer the question. Sorry.
Well, we have some kind of unknowns here. One is what you're speaking of, but also we would need to research further the specifics of that site. We'd need to know what the conditions are on that site to have a firmer understanding of the relationship between the two sites.
Got it. So I'll go back to Commissioner DeCarty, that the cross-parking of two sites can be really problematic based on lease, who the ownership is. You have to encumber another site with a parking agreement, all those things, which make it hard to do. So would you consider not having that as part of your condition if we want to move this forward tonight?
I think I'd rather lose in the vote.
So we've got a first from Commissioner DeCarty, which would look like, as we said with number one, the duration of the lease. And number two would require further research, coming back. Staff would what, issue a determination on the feasibility of doing a cross-parking agreement after doing analysis of whether there is in fact excess space vis a vis the use and the ratios and the rest of it. The mechanics of it, I'm speaking of. Would that be the mechanics of it?
So generally speaking, it sounds like yes, but just to confirm, you're speaking of potential continuance as a result of this. Is that correct?
Well, given that you can't make a determination here tonight, procedurally, what do we have besides a continuance? Tell me, what are our other options?
That would be the only option for that particular item.
Great. So for that item, we would have a continuance. Okay, I'm looking for, I think, was, yeah, Commissioner Kennedy, because you had something, you're next.
Yeah, I think through staff. So, okay, so let me, I just want to make sure that, for lack of a better word, that I'm not losing my mind here. So we have sat up here and we have allowed to tandem park, bundle park larger sites in, for example, the Life Sciences District, where one project has 177 spaces and is going to be underparked when it opens and somebody's going to borrow, somebody else is going to borrow that parking and the parking is going to be bundled together. And we say like, we're going to, and we, and we, we approve those projects. And, but all the time we're saying like, and we just hope that the lessors do not lose their leases and everything goes by and everybody stays hunky-dory with this idea that we've bundled these two large, large sites with significant amounts of parking. But for this one particular trip, that we can't seem to figure out what to do with this TDM plan in this one trip, we're going to continue this applicant's project for that. Because if that's the case, the system is completely broken, completely broken. And I have, I have sat up here and I honestly can't believe that we're still talking about this, this one car trip. I mean, this is exactly what is wrong with this system.
Commissioner Riggs.
Okay, I suspect we can make this work. And it's my goal to have Mr. Wilson walk out of here with a use permit. So here is my attempt through the chair. Mr. Pluter, if we were to incorporate a condition that the applicant provide carpooling from a legal space off-site, then we would not have to encumber a specific property. Am I right?
Yeah, if I can respond to that, I think we need more information on, you know, where the space is and what the requirements are. But I mean, certainly one option is to take a vote on Commissioner DeCarty's motion that would include a continuance. And if that doesn't pass, then another commissioner, well, certainly first, someone else would have to second it. But if that motion fails, another commissioner could make a motion to approve the project without that second condition.
What I'd like to do-
That is true, but at the chair's discretion, I'll hear from him and then we'll see if there's any other comments and we'll come back and take a vote.
Excuse me. So what I'd like to do is second the motion made, but with the friendly suggestion that we decouple the location of the alternative parking space. Indeed, we could simply say that at least one of the employees will be carpooling without saying where that employee parks his car, because in a sense, it's not our business. And secondly, a friendly suggestion that the $20 a month be allowed to be paid to someone involved in this carpooling process and that that would satisfy the $20, rather than having the two separately.
To the maker.
Yeah, it's not my desire to continue this. That's just ridiculous to make you come back. I, you know, so if that's, the implication of my motion is to continue and I'm not going to vote for my own motion, number one. So, and number two, the brokenness, I would completely echo, and it's not just this, it's on these broader projects as well. So the fact that this is what we have to work with is ridiculous as a planning commission for the betterment of our community. And so then to number three, I appreciate Commissioner Riggs's efforts to try to cobble together something that meets the spirit of what we're trying to do here and gets this thing approved. But at this point, I, it also feels like a fool's errand to have us try to design things and then have staff say what's going to get continued or not be continued. I kind of appreciate guidance the other direction, which is just tell us that it's, there's absolutely nothing we can do about this and let's vote and be done with it.
Is that, is there a specific request to staff for feedback on that?
So I would love to hear feedback on Commissioner Riggs's point, but I also don't want to go around the merry-go-round here of Commissioner Riggs's thing doesn't work for particular X, Y, or Z. If we can't meet the spirit of what Commissioner Riggs and I have been talking about, then just tell us we can't meet the spirit of it and let's be done with it.
Look forward to hearing from your thoughts.
Okay, so we're looking at the TDM measure. So the TDM plan is required by the MMRP for the specific plan, EIR. And so it doesn't look like carpooling, paying $20 to carpool isn't a measure because it's meant for that money to be used for transit, to pay for transit. And carpooling, there's really no payment to anyone. I understand the frustration that it's difficult to condition the project. It seems to me if you're looking for staff kind of feedback, I would say just conditioning it to have the payment of the $20 to use for transit for the life of the project. I think that would be the easiest way and encouraging the applicant to use more carpooling. But it's, it's just difficult for us. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we didn't research the other site. And so we don't have the specifics if they have available parking and how all that would So, yeah, if the, I guess the two options I see is making the TDM plan a little more robust with a longer timeframe, the timeframe of the project, or continuing the project to allow staff to do more research. I think that kind of larger projects that may have bundled parking, that's something that's brought forward by the applicant and so staff has time to research that before bringing it to the commission. So it's a little different situation.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty. Commissioner Riggs. So, I'm sorry, so let me go back. So we have a first from Commissioner DeCarty. Is that, are you pulling your first? Okay, so let the record show that Commissioner DeCarty has pulled his first, which in turn creates no second. We have no first on the floor as it currently stands. She's got to make a motion. If Commissioner Kennedy wants to step back up and make that motion, we'll have a first.
At this point, I don't remember the motion.
Now's your opportunity. Looking for any other lights. So I, I'll make a, well, before I make a, ask a question. So how do we know that this, how do we know that this trip is caused by an employee rather than a customer of this?
There's no way to know that.
We don't, do we?
That's correct.
We're, we're making assumptions that this, right, that this, this is being taken up by an employee. And I don't, I don't know that we know that. And we, and I don't know that we don't, that we know that people won't be riding their bikes there. And I don't know that we don't know how things are going to work for this particular place. So given that I don't know, if even the TDM issue, we're solving it by addressing a particular employee, X, I don't know any of that. So with that in mind, I'll stop there and I'll go to Commissioner Doran.
Well, I think on that point, all the car trips are fungible. So it doesn't really matter if you're placing one from employee or customers. But as a way to get past this impasse and get something that we can approve tonight, I would move that we approve the application with caveat that $20 per month is, runs for the length of the lease, as Commissioner DeCarty proposed, and used for purposes which are permitted under the TDM regulations, which would be for public transit. But that we encourage the applicant to encourage his employees to carpool where possible.
So you have a first from Commissioner Doran for extending out the $20 per month for the life of the lease. That's an actual condition. The other is a recommendation associated with that. So we have a first from Commissioner Doran, as stated. Commissioner Kennedy.
I second the motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Kennedy, seconding Commissioner Doran's first with those conditions. I'll look to staff. Are you clear in, are you clear on the direction?
Yes, we're clear. Thank you.
Great. So we have clarity from staff. I see no other lights on. I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving this project per Commissioner Doran's first, Kennedy's second, and with the conditions put forward by Commissioner Doran, raise your hand. Let the record show that Commissioners Tate, Doran, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy are voting in the affirmative. All against, please raise your hand. All abstaining. Commissioner DeCarty abstaining. The motion passes five to one abstention. Congratulations, you are approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Which leads us to F4 on tonight's agenda. F4 on tonight's agenda is a use permit for 710 Willow Road. This is a request for a use permit to allow sale of beer and wine at an existing service station, convenience store, for off-premises consumption every day from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. the following day, and operate an existing service station and associated convenience store 24 hours a day in the C4 General Commercial District. As part of the review, the planning commission will need to determine whether the sale of alcohol at this location serves a public, public convenience or necessity in accordance with the requirements of the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. Mr. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I do have an update to the staff report. There were a couple of emails that were received in the past couple of days and both were in opposition to the project. I wanted to draw your attention to one of those emails in particular that we received yesterday. And a little bit of background on that is that on December 17th of last year, the city council adopted an ordinance that restricted the sale of flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes in Menlo Park. And that ordinance went into effect on January 17th of 2020, this year. The email outlines concerns about the sales of flavored tobacco. An individual who is a resident of the area and was trained by San Mateo County to volunteer with outreach to tobacco retailers about this new ordinance, went to the store on March 4th and observed that there were flavored tobacco products for sale or on the shelves. And the ordinance specifies that if the item is even see, able to be seen on the shelves, that's considered available for sale. And so because of the concerns about the potential violations of that ordinance, staff did have concerns about how that might translate to ability to regulate alcohol sales at the site. And so we did prepare new findings to deny the use permit for alcohol sales. And that would, that would be our recommendation at this time. The options that are before the commission this evening in consideration of the project would be to deny the use permit according to the new findings, to continue the use permit to gather more information and determination, determine if compliance is being made with regard to the sale of tobacco. A third option would be to approve the use permit with a condition that would place an expiration date on the use permit for sale of tobacco, just to gauge whether or not it's being done in the appropriate manner over time. And then the fourth would be to approve the use permit with the original conditions as outlined in the original staff report. That's all the information that I have to share, but I'm happy to answer questions if any of the commissioners have any.
Okay, that was a lot. Thank you. That was a lot, Tom. So let me back into this. When you say new findings, those are findings that are not included in this staff report?
That's correct. Originally, we were recommending approval of the use permit for alcohol sales.
But with truncated timeframe?
Uh, no, it was indefinite, just a straightforward approval of the use permit for an indefinite time, as long as the store is in operations and compliance.
The time of day was trunk, the time of day was restricted.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So, so number one, so the new findings we have supersede what's in the staff report. And just for edification again, would you repeat those new findings?
Yes. So the new findings would be to deny the use permit for, to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-premises consumption and make findings that it would be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. And in particular, because the business has not demonstrated strict compliance with regulations related to the sale of tobacco. compliance with regulations related to the sale of tobacco, and the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood cannot be ensured if the business is granted a use permit for the sale of beer and wine for off-premise consumption.
And that's not, that's a definitive, that's not to be reviewed at a later date, that is a denial of?
Right, that would be a straight denial of the project.
It's a straight denial of the project, okay. And then, door number two was, if you could repeat that again, please?
So, I'm happy to go through the options that I outlined, again, if you want me to go through those. The second option would be a continuance, if there's a need to gather some more information and determine if the retailer has come into compliance with the sale of tobacco. Do you want me to keep going with the other?
So, retailer, so upon determining that they've come into compliance with the sale of tobacco, then is it contemplated that staff would restate what is in the staff report as it relates to the sale of alcohol for the timeframe stated in the staff report?
Potentially. We, since, so since we received the information, we haven't had a chance to go out and verify on the site, but there were the photos that were in the email, and in addition, I did have contact with another individual who went to the site and indicated that he saw the same things occurring. And so, the continuance would be for staff to go out, see if the site has been brought into compliance, and if so, return to the commission for consideration that things may happen, you know, there may be accidents, it's a new ordinance, there may have been misunderstandings, et cetera, that would be all for the commission to weigh out, but potentially to approve a use permit for sale of alcohol based on bringing the site into compliance.
But that's to be determined, you could come back with, you could again come back after a continuance and say, nope, don't want to still request denial.
Correct.
Or still recommend denial, okay, so that's number two. Number three?
The third option would be to approve the use permit, but to place a condition on it that's not, so in the staff report, it's just a straightforward approval is the recommendation, the original recommendation. This would be an approval with a condition that would place an expiration date on the use permit, so that after a period of a certain number of years or whatever timeframe the commission determines, the use permit would expire, and the applicant would need to return to the commission to request a new use permit to allow for continued sale of alcohol on the site.
With the hours of alcohol sales being six to midnight?
Yes, six to midnight.
And with the recommendation that there not be 24-hour, or would that have anything to do with the operation of the site?
Yeah, so there's two use permit requests. The first one is for alcohol sales, the second one is for 24-hour operations, specifically between the hours of midnight and 6:00 AM, and we are recommending a denial of that. So, the options that I'm listing are really catered to the use permit for alcohol sales only.
Okay. And then the fourth one?
The fourth one would just be to go back to the original staff report recommendation, that would be straightforward approval of the use permit for alcohol sales and denial of the 24-hour operations.
Great. Okay. So, any clarifying questions to staff as it relates to what Mr. Smith just gave us in terms of the four options we have in front of us for this evening? Great, so from there, are we going to, Ms. Sandoval, we're going to proceed with a normal process of applicant, public comment, there's no change to process in that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. So, if the applicant would come forward, please, and tell us about your application?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
To all of you. My name is Aparna Sahar, and I am in this location since 1985. And the recent incident where Mr. Tom Smith is mentioning, we got the letter from the city on January 2nd, and I was about to go for my trip outside the country, that was long time plan. So, and I got that letter in my hand on January 6th, because during the New Year's Eve, I was out of town. So, immediately, I called my supplier, that this is the letter we got it, and we have to, you have to take all the material back because it's the city ordinance. And in the meantime, I call City of Menlo Park, City Manager's Office, whoever the letter was given to us, the name, and I left the message, and I request her that can we get at least four weeks of time, because that's what my supplier is asking for, that all other places, they got four weeks of time. And I told her that I will be out of country and coming back in the last week of February. And I communicated with Mr. Ms. Cara Silver, and she asked me, she will work with me in this thing, and she asked me to send her the, how much stuff I have, the log of, the detail of all the items. So, I made the spreadsheet and sent it to her. And then she responded back to me on January 22nd that, no, city will not give you any extra time. At that time, I was outside the country. So, I responded, I informed my manager that please stop all the sale of tobacco, all the flavored tobacco, and, but I did not know that those things has to be removed from the site, and those were almost like a $13,000-some-dollar material was there. Tobacco is, as you know, is very expensive these days. So, I have communicated with Ms. Silver that I will be back, and then I will take care of that, all those things. I will talk to my supplier, as well as the cigarette manufacturer, whatever they don't take, they will take it back. And I happened to be back in last week of February, then I got a little bit upset, and the first day I was in my site was March 4th. And I was taking all the inventories, what I have, so that I can inform the supplier, they can come and pick up those things. Right at that moment, somebody dropped by, and she was, this is a glass, all glass room kiosk, she was peeking through the window and trying to take some pictures when I was working with those inventory I was managing. And then I opened the door, I said, ma'am, can I help you? So, she just did not even, I said, why you are taking the picture, and where are you from, which agency you are? And she just came inside the room where I was working and started taking all the pictures, okay? But I did not know who she was. I said, are you from City of Menlo Park? She said, yes. I said, can I have your card? But she never gave me any card. Then I said, please tell me, are you from City of Menlo Park? Because in the past, in my 30-plus years' experience, whoever comes from city, they always give the card and introduce themselves. So, she said, no, I am a volunteer working for City of Menlo Park. So, I told her, listen, I just came today, and I am working with this thing, but we are not selling anything, and I was not aware of that, that we cannot keep this thing in the premises, and that's the only room we have, we can store the cigarette. So, where else I can store the cigarettes? So, then she told me, you cannot store it here in the premises. And if I don't store in the premises some other place, the cigarette company will not take my material, because each location has, they have a contract. So, they will come to my location, they are not going to go to my other location, and because they don't have the contract here, so they are not going to take it. I have to store somewhere in the premises. And I don't think that we, anybody has any, like, proof that we are selling to, selling to anybody flavored tobacco after this date. When I got an email from Ms. Silver on 22nd, we have never sold anything to them. If somebody can prove that, yes, I sold it, they have a receipt, any kind of cash receipt or credit card receipt, I am ready to take the blame. But this is just totally wrong, that blaming somebody for this thing. That's the thing I can say, and you can just see my past record, in the past record, I have never sold, any violated any rules, and recently, we have renovated our gas station, and we got all the appreciation from all the customer, and we have beautified the location. I don't know whether any of you have seen it before, and now you can say that it's a big change. And we have accommodated our neighbors' concern also, they wanted to put some no-smoking sign, we have provided that no-smoking sign, I can show you the pictures, that all over the property, we have this thing, we have all over the property surveillance camera. And so, if somebody is seeing that, that somebody is smoking and they are loud noise, that I have not seen that. Once in a while, everybody will, they will be there smoking, but most of the people come there in their car, they don't walk around in the neighborhood, they fill up the tank, and then they go. So, this is the kind of business we have, because gas station, nobody parks their car for a long time and walk around in the neighborhood, I have never seen that. So, now, it's up to your decision whether you're going to accept it or not. But yes, that day, the lady come over there, she never introduced, I was, the first day I came to my business, I was doing all the inventory, that what we are having and what we are going to return, I have to make all the log sheet, and she walked it at the same time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I will ask fellow commissioners if they have any questions.
Sure.
As it relates to this. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. May I ask, do you have any flavored tobacco currently in the store? Visible, visible in the store?
No, not visible, we have put it into the box, and I have contacted the people, and they are coming next week, and they are going to take it out.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can get the timeframe correct. The letter from the city arrived on the 2nd, you were able to read it and respond to the city on the 22nd of January, is that correct?
No, I responded next week. But I got a letter back from Ms. Carla Silver on 22nd, because verbally, she told me that, okay, send me your list, what you have at the stock, and then I will think about it. I asked for two weeks of extension until end of January, but she said she will let me know. On 22nd of January, I got a letter from her, no, the extension is not going to be granted.
And then, from the 22nd to March 4th, March 4th being the date at which pictures were taken of you having flavored cigarettes on premise? What again happened during that timeframe, and why was, why were there, why was there flavored tobacco behind the glass that were visible to individuals, if I'm hearing that correctly?
Yes, because I was not, I thought that we cannot sell it, but we have to remove it, that I did not have any idea, otherwise, I would have told them to put it in a box and store it some other place until I come back.
I'm a little bit handicapped, because I don't have the letter from the city on the 2nd, or Ms. Silver's response on the 22nd. Are you saying that neither of those communications asked for removal of the tobacco from the shelves?
No. We just talked about the extension, and I even offer her during my email, I am not there, so if you want, you want to come and remove all the stuff, remove it, but I will be coming back on last week of February, and then I can take care of, once I come back, then I will be taking care, I will be contacting the supplier or the cigarette company, manufacturer, to remove those things.
Thank you. And let me ask, question to staff, Mr. Smith, do you have those letters? Do we know if, in there, it said, please remove inventory from shelves?
Unfortunately, I don't have a copy of those letters, so that would have to be something that we would look into. I do know the ordinance specifically says that an offering for sale is if tobacco products are sold and/or displayed in the retail establishment, and so, I don't know if that was included in the letter or not, though, specifically outlined there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that helps me, helps me, and also has me ask some more questions as well. Commissioner Kennedy?
So, just a sort of a clarifying question, so you received the letter, and then you asked for more time, and then you were out of town. Was there no way that you could authorize somebody else on your staff, the person that you left in charge, to follow up and remove the products from the display?
What happened, that if you see that area, I, it did not, I thought it was the truth, that I thought we cannot sell it, but we cannot store it anywhere in the premises, that I did not have any idea.
No, that's not the question I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, it was still on display until you came back from your trip?
No, most of them was removed from there, most of them. One of the supplier has took all the cartons, but there are some loose pack, they will not take it. So, for those, I have to call the manufacturer, Philip Morris. So, they cannot be contacted unless I am here.
Right, so, just for clarification, so, once you received the letter, you took all the product away from display, but they were still in the store? There were none behind the counter?
Some of them was there.
So, there were still some, you removed some of the packages and put them away in a safe place in boxes, but you left others. Is there a reason why you didn't remove all of them from the display and put them away in a box in another room or wherever where you were storing some of them?
We don't have any other room in this, there is a sales area, and there is a one room which is safe, where we keep all the cigarette, so that nobody can access it. That is our only storage area, so, and that day, when she was there, I took everything out, and I was counting and putting in a piece of spreadsheet what we have. I was taking all the inventory, so that I can send it to the cigarette manufacturer, that these are the packs we have, for each name, variety, and how many of each. But they are still stored inside the box, maximum cartons are taken, I can send you the invoice, that they have given us the credit for those things, that they took it on January, if you want, I can show you that invoice, that they have taken in all the cartons, and they have given us the credit, but some of them, which they don't want to take it, my supplier, that has to go to the manufacturer. So, only those inventory I was taking on that day when I came the first time back to this country, I was out of country. So, I came, and I was taking all the inventory, and I am a very responsible citizen, and I know what is good and bad, and I know that this is, once there is a ordinance, we have to follow it. And if you check my 35 years of experience in business, you will see I have never violated any rules. And so, for me, this thing, to do this thing and take this acquisition is really, is really hurting me.
Thank you, and what I will say is, we've spent a lot of time, it seems, on a really important question about option one, option two, option three, option one being straight denial and no ability to sell. If I get back to the alcohol question, we haven't talked at all about that, do you want to take this time to tell? talked at all about that. Do you want to take this time to tell us at all? Because of the options we have, one of those options is to, for instance, allow, disregard the, disregard this issue of the tobacco and allow for alcohol sales, whether it's for a truncated period of time or, you know, you're applying for 24-hour sale of alcohol. Do you want to take this time to talk at all about that part of your application as it relates to the sale of alcohol and why that would be a good idea and what hours you believe are appropriate?
Sure. We never had an idea to do sale, start the alcohol sale here. But after we did the remodeling and we requested, we outreach to our customer if they have any suggestion or how we can improve, how we can give them a better service. So we have lots of requests came for 24 hours and for beer and wine. So then we gave a thought and then I went to the city of Menlo Park, talked to the planning department. I said, that's what the request is coming. And I have given them all the requests that customer has signed it for. And so I said, how do we proceed for that? So they said, you have to go to ABC. So we did that, as well as the use permit application, whatever we were guided, we did it. And, and accordingly, we proceeded. And ABC came here and they inspected, they don't have any problem. Okay. So they are waiting for the approval from the planning commission. And for the second question about the 24 hours opening, we were, we started here doing the business since 1985. From 1986 till 2015, sometime, we were 24 hours. And then we saw there is not much business after midnight. So we were not keeping it open. We closed the night, night shift. But recently, because of some customer are coming here, they're looking for milk and they are complaining, how come there is, everything is closed? We cannot get even milk. Somebody came for like a baby food. They said there is nothing over there. So they are just requesting. It's not like that if I open 24 hours, that going to improve my business a lot. This is for the convenience of the neighborhood people who are asking for keep us open. But even if you think it's not going to be 24 hours, then I will tell them that, listen, we tried, but it did not fly. That's all going to be my answer. And we never had any intention of selling alcohol after midnight or after 2:00 a.m., which is the ABC has the rule that we cannot, the timing can be sold between 6:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. We cannot sell after 2:00 a.m. So I, I totally agree with that. If you want to put the condition, something, we will go by this thing.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up questions for my fellow commissioners? So what I'm going to do, seeing none, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call for public comment. And then after that, we're going to bring, I'm going to bring a backup here for the dais for our further discussion. And chances are, there might be additional questions. So please stay close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that, I will proceed to the public comment portion of this agenda item. And the first individual I have is Michelle Garf, followed by Katrina Stieb. Good evening. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your political jurisdiction, generally your address, you live in Menlo Park or the organization you represent.
All right. I'm in Menlo Park. My name's Michelle Garf. I'm just here as a resident. I live right around the corner. And, and I have a lot of concerns. My main concern comes as a mother that lives around the corner with my kids, for like the safety, peace, quiet, and cleanliness of what is happening on the street where my kids play and commute to school each day. And I am grateful that the store has recently improved their appearance. But what we have found is a lot of unwanted behavior in the increase in customers. And what happens is because there's nowhere to really consume the products on site, people are loitering in the back corner or they're walking through the streets, consuming the products that they've purchased, they're smoking, they are, there's trash on the ground, they're leaving things behind. We've had, where we live, there's two like long stretches of fence across the street. And so that seems to be a really common place for people to want to stop because they're not directly in front of a house. And in that area, we've had to clean up human feces twice. We've had hypodermic needles. We're just like really unhappy with the extra traffic, the parking there. And the staff report says that it has to serve a public convenience or necessity. And I just feel like with the many other options in the area, including El Rancho, which is one block away, serving alcohol, it's just really not a convenience or necessity for the people that are in the Willows. And that the requests that they've compiled for this added service is not coming from the members of our neighborhood that our family communities just is not interested in those services. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Katrina, excuse me, Karina Stieb, followed by Rocky Garf. Good evening. Please state your name. You've got three minutes and your address or political jurisdiction.
All right, thank you. My name is Karina Stieb. And I live on 762 Arnold Way, about a block away from the gas station. I am a mother. I, and I have a six-year-old who just learned how, maybe not too long ago, to ride a bike. So he does ride a bike and around the streets. So one of the issues I have with the situation is that when I bought a house, I'm going to share a story. A colleague of mine lived in the Willows 40 years ago. So he was there when the situation wasn't so great. It was not a safe neighborhood. Actually, in the same vicinity where the gas station is, there was a drug dealers going on around the vicinity and other unsavory situations. There were drunk people who walked around and disturbed the peace. There was a high crime rate. Now, this was a time when alcohol was available 24/7. And also, kids were, had access to alcohol, underage kids who got access to alcohol. And folks didn't follow the ordinance. So from that perspective, I have a picture of what it looked like before the city got cleaned up. So my friend said, wow, that place got cleaned up. It's amazing. Now it's a family neighborhood. So in today's world, it is a family neighborhood. There was a quote back in 1997 in The Chronicle where they said the police would trip over dealers, drug dealers. Now today, they trip over tricycles. And that's a wonderful picture, if you ask me. And I would like to keep that, if possible, in my neighborhood. So today is a family-oriented neighborhood with kids and residents. So not just families with kids, but residents who can walk their dogs safely across the street, around the neighborhood is really important to have. So I ask you and who you to think, to help us keep this neighborhood safe for not just the children, which is very important, dear to my heart, but also to the residents who live there and continue to live there for many, many years. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you listening to this.
Thank you. Next is Rocky Garf, followed by Dev Dada. Good evening. Your name, three minutes, and your address or organization you represent?
Rocky Garf. I'm Michelle's husband. Live at 758 Arnold Way. Karina's our neighbor. Dev's our neighbor. Everybody, many of the people that you see here are neighbors. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of points to the commission. I feel like there's a gross misrepresentation of the data here. If you look at the addresses and all of the letters in this packet, not very, I think there's one of them that's within a stone's throw of the actual vicinity. There's addresses across the street. There's an address in Fremont. There's addresses in East Palo Alto. I don't know how they gathered these, but they did not bring, bring them around to the neighborhood. They didn't get any of our feedback on this, on this proposal. And so I think that the demand that they're, that they're talking about just doesn't exist. Like my wife said and Karina, there's plenty of other options for responsible adults to buy alcohol, beer and wine. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. But bringing in access to that at, at hours of the night, when if you really need that, you could just drive over to Safeway or someplace that's a responsible place to buy it. I think that's, that's a reasonable request from the neighborhood. I think the other point that I wanted to mention is that the VA, which serves our veterans, people who have, who have sacrificed for our country and are dealing with many challenges, including PTSD and, and other addictions that they're trying to battle, they don't allow smoking or alcohol consumption at the VA. And so what happens is, is many of those people, and the neighborhood can, can talk about it, they come over and they walk around. And it's sad, but some of them have, have severe mental problems. They've yelled obscenities. I think, you know, they've had lots of challenges. But giving them access to go buy booze at midnight and they can't go back to the VA, where are they going, where are they going to consume it? There's no place to consume it on the premises. So they're going to walk around the corner to where we all live. And it's just not something that I think is conducive to our neighborhood. So appreciate you listening to my thoughts.
Thank you. Next is Dev Dada, followed by Danielle Prodon. Good evening. Name?
Good evening. My name's Dev Dada. I live at 504 O'Keefe Street. So I'm literally 400 yards away from the business in question. A lot of my neighbors have already covered a lot of what I've, what I was going to say. I live at 504 O'Keefe Street. I've been there for 10 years. I live there with my wife and two kids. They're 10 and 13. They attend the same public schools that my neighbors do. They walk around this wonderful neighborhood. And one thing, a couple of things I want to say is, I'd like to confirm that almost daily, I'm picking up litter out of my driveway. And it's cigarette butts, it's cigarette packets, it's candy, candy packets, just thrown into my driveway every day. So the comment that was made that people stay in their cars and consume whatever they're buying at the gas station is simply not true. I live there. I've been there for 10 years. The point Rocky made about this list of so-called proponents for this proposal, I took a look at some of the addresses. There's two different people listed at 500 O'Keefe Street. There is no 500 O'Keefe Street. I live at 504. My neighbors are at 508 and 512 and so on. So I really questioned validity of the so-called customers who are asking for alcohol to be sold 24 hours a day. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Danielle Prodon, followed by Brian Gilmore.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Prodon. I live at 572 O'Keefe Street, which is the house directly adjacent to the gas station. So just right behind, I have three children, two teenagers and a younger boy. Share very much all the concerns that my neighbors have raised, including the VA and the garbage that we have around the house. It's just more amplified because we're just in vicinity nearby. Smoking, for example, my son's bedroom is a couple of feet away from the air pump. The challenge that I think we have is that original expansion that happened last year basically created a rest area and sometimes a restroom area for all the patrons where they, you know, consume and drink. And we have to, you know, clean up a lot of stuff after them. I want to bring up, although also, another point where there was another violation by the gas station and they haven't mentioned, where a homeless person was allowed to leave on the premises for extended period of time, more than one month. I've called, I raised this repeatedly with managers. I've called the police department a couple of times. It took quite a lot of time to remove that person. I have a lot of empathy, but you know, leaving, having, allowing somebody to leave the gas station, that person was extremely loud, was swearing all the time. Well past midnight, I had to close all the windows so the kids wouldn't hear the swearing. It just made it like very difficult. So honestly, when I see this tree of Menlo Park, it doesn't feel to me like living in Menlo Park. It's small. I mean, like in Route 66, it's, you have all the people who drive on highway, they stop and they consume, you know, all the, you know, the food and everything else there. So it's, and, you know, with allowing alcohol, again, I have two teenagers, they bike to school. What that extension has done is changed the flow of traffic where you have previously had cars entering the station mostly from the Willows. Now they kind of go more into O'Keefe and enter that. My kids, there was a teenager killed last week in Palo Alto by a car in a car accident, unfortunately. So I think about that all the time. It's the additional traffic and cars that drive. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Brian Gilmore, followed by Tricia Barr. Good evening.
Good evening. Tricia had to leave for a meeting in Rubic City. I have a letter she has asked me to read with her time. Before I do that, I'd like to address my own concerns. First, I'd like to point out that a couple of things that the applicant said this evening don't seem to make sense to me. She said she received the letter on January 2nd and asked for a four-week extension. Yet on March 4th, she was still not in compliance, which is much longer than four weeks. She also said that she has never had a problem or violated any laws regarding tobacco sales. This location was cited for selling tobacco to minors in the past. And you'll find this letter in your packet with the link to that report. The final one I'd like to, to bring up is that she said she had addressed all the neighbors' concerns. When they applied to make a convenience store out of the garage back in 2019, I had several concerns. Trash, which we get, as Dev said, on a daily basis, cigarette wrappers, candy wrappers, et cetera, and delivery trucks blocking O'Keefe Street and causing an issue with cars that have to get around them. And, and I was told that both of those would be addressed. Additional trash cans would be put up, signs would be put up, and no delivery trucks would park on O'Keefe Street. The trash cans do not exist. I have not seen any signs. And I have pictures of two delivery trucks blocking O'Keefe Street last week. Not only O'Keefe Street, but my neighbor's driveway with their loading ramp. So I don't necessarily, I have to disagree with what the applicant said. Now, I lived in, in the Willows back when it was a very bad neighborhood. And we had a lot of problems with veterans that had mental health issues and were drinking to resolve that or to lessen their, their issues. We used to have to rouse people off of our lawn because they had drunk to pass out. You couldn't go to the park because people were drunk and abusive. I do not want to see the Willows return to that type of a neighborhood. Selling alcohol after 10 o'clock at night is a very good introduction to getting us back to that type of a neighborhood. People who are going in and buying alcohol between 10 and 12 or 10 and 2 are going to consume it in the neighborhood and bad things will happen. So I strongly urge you to vote against alcohol sales of any type. Even the ABC has said, there are three other locations that sell off-premise consumption of alcohol in our neighborhood. And there's two that sell on-premise consumption. A fourth, I believe the ABC has said would be excessive and not necessary. So please consider that. I'd now like to take a moment to address Tricia Barr's issues. Tricia was the person who went and took pictures at the market.
So let me get clarification.
Yes.
Generally speaking, the person needs to be here to give them their time, but...
I believe she dedicated her time, assigned her time to me for this. Is that possible?
Yes. Generally, the person needs to be here, present to do that, but that's fine.
Okay.
Please read. What is her, for the record, what is her address? What's her political jurisdiction or organization?
I, well, she's part of the organization trained by the county in Menlo Park to address the alcohol tobacco, flavored tobacco sales after January 17th. And I believe she lives on Willow Road.
Okay. All right. Proceed, please.
I won't read the entire letter. It is in your packet. And I encourage you, if you have not read it, to please familiarize yourself with it. "I am opposed to the 76th gas station at 710 Willow Road expanding its license to sell alcohol. The 76th gas station's applied use is detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of our neighborhood. The gas station has shown a disregard for compliance with the laws governing the sale of regulated products. And as a longtime resident, I am concerned." She points out that they have been sold, they have been cited for selling to minors in the past, that as of Wednesday, March 4th, they were still displaying or selling flavored tobacco, that there are several retailers close by, one right, less than a block away, that sell alcohol, that it is located within, within 400 feet of public and private schools, Willow School and the Alto School, in addition to public parks. She finally notes that it's located across from the Veterans Health Administration facility, which has a substance and smoking cessation services. She goes on to say, and in... She goes on to say, in addressing her visit on March 4th, that she had met with all of the 21 locations in Menlo Park that sold flavored tobacco when the ordinance went into effect, and she revisited several times after that. Everyone except 76th gas station at 710 Willow Road was in compliance. So it seems like this was not a difficult issue to be in compliance for, and I would assume that, not having seen the letter, but that if the other ones were in compliance, that had to be specifically pointed out, or you would have found others that were in the same situation. So she talks about her meeting on the 4th and the discussions that she had with the applicant, and finally she attaches images of what she has seen. In addition to an image that was on the gas pumps prior to January 17th indicating that no flavored tobaccos would be sold post-January 17th, indicating that they were aware of the requirements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Sean Vanderhoven, I hope I got that right, followed by Michael Palmer. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Sean Vanderhoven. I live at 728 Regal Court, just around the corner, and I just have a few concerns that I'd like to present to the commission, and most of it's just about, you know, a double-click on what you've heard so far today. My family, I've got three teenage boys. They all attend Menlo Atherton, and so my primary concern is for the boys and the kids in the neighborhood and the residents. And I've got four, and the first is just the risk of increase in motor vehicle accidents in the area. You know, as we kind of thought about this proposal, we made sure to read what the studies show, and it turns out that, you know, almost 4X the fatal crashes occur after 10 p.m. And so we consider the risk, as was said earlier, that many of the people that come through and, you know, purchase from the convenience store, they don't stay, they leave. Well, if they're buying alcohol after 10 and between 2, not only are we causing a problem for Menlo Park, but where else are we, you know, shipping this problem of drinking and driving off to at that time? The second concern I have is just the increase of violent crimes. You know, the U.S. Department of Justice shows that 40% of violent crimes occur when people are under the influence or intoxicated, and the data also shows that between 10 and 2 a.m., the vast majority of violent crimes are committed during which time alcohol would be available for purchase here. The report also shows the strong correlation between intoxication and the crime due to the reality that when people are fatigued and it's late in the morning, they're more likely to be less in control of their impulses, and I think that that's a control that we really can't afford to have with kids and people in the neighborhood. Double-click on this idea of disrespect for our veterans, you know, at this health facility across the street, they include programs for inpatient substance abuse and rehabilitation programs. Life's hard for most veterans that are going through this VA, and so to increase late-night alcohol sales with what Rocky said earlier, where will they consume it? What kind of trouble will this, you know, invent for them? Failure to limit the sale of alcohol in this area is, I think, irresponsible on all of our beheaths for our veterans who really need support for the local environment to make the changes that they're battling. And then four, I would just like to double-click on this idea of safety from the neighborhood. I mean, the bottom line is, we want our children, we want our residents to be safe, and, you know, I think about my son Seth, who, he's 15. He has some friends right over here on Laurel, and every Friday night they get together and play games, and he bikes home around 11:30, and if you try to take that away from a 15-year-old, if you all have had 15-year-olds, it's hard to tell them that they can't ride their bike with their friends down Willow Road to come home. And I'm just horrified at the idea that there will be inebriated people in the area buying alcohol. The facts kind of show that more people on the roads are going to be drinking and driving, and the closer you are to a place that sells alcohol is really a terrifying thought. So I strongly urge you, behalf of my fellow neighbors, to limit this proposal and to say no to the sale of alcohol and the 24-hour gig that's on the table. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The last card that I have is for Michael Palmer, and in closing, after Mr. Palmer speaks, I will close public comment in the absence of any other cards. This is my last card. If you'd like to give public comment, please fill out a card, bring it up, or send it up. Mr. Palmer, good evening, and you've got three minutes. Please tell us your...
And first off, it's Palma.
Palma.
Common mistake. I'm at 508 O'Keefe with most of my neighbors, and it's interesting that almost all the neighbors on the actual block with the property are here, speaking against this move. And I've submitted a long letter arguing against the extended hours and the alcohol. I've lived at this address for 20 years this summer, and just to repeat what you've already heard, with the foot traffic in that space, on a weekly basis, we're dealing with trash, sometimes a daily basis, just from the foot traffic moving back down from Willow Road back into the neighborhood in front of the bus stop. Some of it is from the store, some of it's not, but that's a fact. And if we add up the extra hours and we throw in alcohol into it, we'll see more trash. We'll be able to follow that empty six-pack down the street. In the last two years, I've had to call the police on three different transits. There are homeless living in the bushes across the street from the convenience store. It's a natural place of convenience. It's where people gather, they can buy whatever they wish, they hang out, they do hang out there. It's not just drive-through traffic. You know, it's foolish to think that there aren't people hanging out there. We've seen it every day for 20 years. So it's a natural gathering spot. And that's where the issue is. It's a small concentrated property without shelter from the neighboring community. It's sitting on a block where, besides a few other retail locations, the back around it are, what, dozens of houses on the block itself, plus the apartment complex across the street, across O'Keefe. It's too much traffic to concentrate without a standoff for the commercial property, and anything that happens there spills out quite quickly onto, into the neighborhood. So, with that, I argue against the use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone who spoke this evening. I have no other public comment card, so I will close public comment for this item. Bring it back up to the dais and open it up for commissioner comment. I see Commissioner Doran's light on. Commissioner Doran.
Well, I'd just like to start with observing for the record that I think that the city council acted really precipitously on this ordinance with the flavored tobacco. I think 30 days' notice over the holidays especially is just not sufficient. So I have some sympathy for the applicant on that basis. I don't think that's a good way to operate a democracy. But I don't think that really changes my view of this application. I'm very persuaded by the neighbors and their concerns. I think they have a lot of concerns that, you know, a lot of neighborhoods would have with something like this, which they've expressed well, but I think one thing that's particularly persuasive to me is the presence of the Veterans Administration Hospital and their rules about drinking and smoking and the proximity of that place, the hospital, to this location. So I am inclined to vote against both the use permits for the 24-hour operation and the alcohol sales.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes. A couple of months ago, we had a use permit request for a gas station to have alcohol sales for off-premise, and we spent a lot of time debating the merits of that and a lot of the same concerns, but that gas station is on El Camino, on a very busy thoroughfare, adjacent to the train station, and next, you know, half a block away from the 7-Eleven that also sells alcohol for off-premise consumption. I have, you know, I agree with Commissioner Doran, but I also look at, you know, people acting in good faith, and none of this speaks to me as good decision-making on the part of the applicant or neighborliness or respect, and I would second the motion to, if that was a motion? No. Okay. I would make a motion to deny both the use permit for 24 hours and to sell alcohol.
So I'm gonna, we've got four different options in front of us. So you're going to pick number one?
I pick number one. Door number one.
So door number one is to deny any increase in operating hours and to deny sales of alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Riggs? Oh, sorry. We had a first. Commissioner Riggs, for the record, we have a first from Kennedy. Commissioner Riggs.
I will second the motion. From the start, I felt that 24 hours really right on the edge of a residential neighborhood is not a great idea. I have been in that situation. I think it was my grandmother who was at one point in that situation. It just does not help the neighborhood. It's just not a good fit. And then regarding alcohol, it's, at first I thought, well, why not? Maybe it will help the business, but there isn't a persuasive need, or for that matter, is it easy to seek convenience? When I see someone write a letter saying, oh yeah, I'd like you to handle candy and beer and pizza, and that's a lovely wish list, but that's not someone who's understanding a gas station. I'm not persuaded by that. So I second this motion to deny both requests.
Commissioner Kennedy, your lady still on? Commissioner DeCarty.
This is a millstone to state for the record that I know Ms. Barr, friend of the family, so, but also believe that I can fairly take into consideration all of the points that have been raised here tonight, but wanted to state that for the record.
So, as I think about this issue, I try to unpack it from the tobacco issue, and it's certainly persuasive that something should have been done and nothing was done, unclear as to the direction, so that hampers me on being definitive as to not following what was prescribed in terms of treatment of the tobacco that they weren't supposed to be selling. So I have a question about that, but I'll leave that over in this bucket because it is, I'll leave it in this bucket, and I'll go to the bucket of what makes this retail establishment different from Willow's Market, which is very close to my house, which sells alcohol till, from 6:30, well, until 10 o'clock at night, right? And/or what is different in this location from El Rancho Market, which sells alcohol till, I think it's 9 o'clock at night? So, you've got Willow's, which is a Willow's Market, again, right in my backyard, which is open from 6 to 10, and El Rancho, open from 7 to 9. So as I contemplated, because what we're contemplating here is the ability of the applicant to utilize their business to earn a living, and what would be the reasoning behind why it is I would deprive them from this incremental revenue stream and balance out against community good? As I think about the layout and the configuration and how Willow's Market operates its business, you check out goods, you have a system, and you have people there which are interfacing with the customers in a way that is fundamentally different from how the gas station is set up, the checks, the ability to monitor who's buying the alcohol. Does it look problematic? I've seen it at Willow, and I have a great deal of confidence in how they do it. I've also seen it at El Rancho Market in how the checkout is interfaced with a customer and should something be problematic or not. What I think is different about this facility is I don't know that this is going to have the same ability to monitor the sale of alcohol that these other two locations have, and... So I have that problem with it. I look at it being across from the VA market as, I don't know which way to go with that. It's situational. I mean, I don't know which comes first, the substance abuse or alcohol or access to it or otherwise. So it's a factor in there, but it's not my overriding factor. It's the ability in the track, and to some extent, now the track record plays into it with the tobacco, but really it's the ability to monitor and appropriately control the flow of alcohol being sold on-site, and I don't see that in this location, given where it is, in almost a higher responsibility for this location, which, you know, proximity-wise, it's the same as El Rancho Market, whether you're on this side of it or on this side of it. You have the same proximity to the VA hospital, so you're going to see the same people whether they go here or there. So I was contemplating, I was thinking about what would it look like to have alcohol sales up until 9 o'clock or up until 10 o'clock. For sure, 24 hours off the table for me, and for sure, sales beyond 10 o'clock are off for me, and then the more I got into the discussion, the more I don't think that alcohol sales are appropriate for this location. And I'll leave it at that, and I don't make that decision lightly because the applicant is looking, this is what they do, right, and this is how they earn a living. So, it's not lightly that I make this call on your ability to monetize your location. So that's where I stand on it. And refresh my memory, we've got a first and a second. First from Doran, second from Kennedy.
First from Kennedy, second from...
First Kennedy, second Doran. I'll put a, I'm sorry, Riggs. Thank you, Mr. Riggs. So I'll put a pin in that, and I'll just add my comments there, and I'll look to Mr. DeCarty for his light.
This is through the chair of staff clarifying.
Yes.
So if we deny, what does that mean? Can they never come back with this type of a similar request? Is there a start over on this? What's the difference between deny and their capacity to come back in the future versus a continuance that might have a whole set of parameters with it?
Usually if there's a denial, I mean, they would have the option to appeal to the city council, and usually it's, if that doesn't happen, there's kind of a one-year timeframe where things may change and they could apply again. And I also wanted to point out for the motion, it should clarify if the revised findings, if those are part of the motion, those that do reference the tobacco sales, or if the motion would include different findings that aren't part of those revised findings that we handed out at the dais.
And just to...
Yeah, that's a good point. And those revised findings are, were all passed out in the dais?
Yes, yes.
I missed that. If, oh, sorry, go ahead. That's all right. Just to clarify, so the denial, the right to appeal, if that's not agreed to, then there'd be something like a year, which, and then potentially come back, start again. A continuance would be some set of things that we would direct you all to then go investigate a whole lot of stuff and then bring that back whenever that investigation was done, and we would do that again in whatever timeframe that was in this mix. Do I have that correct in that?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Yeah, so I, just to add my voice in this, I'm compelled primarily by the findings that have been presented by the revised staff report here. I think it's really incumbent to show the faith and the fact of adhering to existing regulations regarding the sale of tobacco, alcohol, and I think, given the unique location here, I think it's a pretty high bar to have an expectation that there would be not any instances of demonstrating noncompliance, and there appear to be several, rather than, I don't need to go into great detail about asking those questions. I have a lot of them to clarify with staff, but ultimately we'll refrain on that, but at least wanted to say why I would be supportive of a denial.
And question to staff, so I'm clear about the beer and wine. You had just referenced in this new set of recommended actions, something having to do with tobacco sales? And what am I supposed to be looking at?
So basically, it's number two in that attachment. So it just references to deny the use permit, and then the reason that's given is that the business has not demonstrated strict compliance with regulations related to the sale of tobacco, and the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood cannot be ensured if the business is granted a use permit for the sale of beer and wine. And so if the commissioner making the motion wanted to update that finding, I mean, that's an option, but I think the use of this finding, I mean, that makes sense to us as staff, since that's our recommendation.
Thank you for that, thank you for pointing out that. So I want to test something here. Ms. Maker of the motion? There's an element, there's a lack of specificity and documentation, investigatory process to say that this, that the folks weren't in strict compliance with regulations related to the sale of alcohol. Like, I hear what's been said, I hear the evidence from his, I see the evidence from his bar, I hear the discussions that went on. I'm not clear about what exactly was said. If I had that letter in front of me, which said, take it off the shelf, and they didn't do it, then this would be a no-brainer for me. There's a piece of this that just going with the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood cannot be insured, because it's alcohol, is enough for me. I'm wondering what your temperature is on that. I can go either way, but I am just a little bit uncomfortable with the investigatory information we have in front of us, that in fact, what is said about their noncompliance is in fact true and why they were noncompliant. So I was curious about your thought on that.
It's a really good question, and I'm glad we're trying to clarify. If we had an applicant who had a spotless record, and that, and if there was at least one other of the other 21 purveyors of flavored tobacco in Menlo Park, who also had come across this obstacle to removing from the displays and clearing from their spaces the tobacco in the timely fashion, I would say, you know what, maybe this, you know, let's give her the benefit of the doubt, they've got a clean record. I guess, you know, we have a link to a document that says they were in violation of selling tobacco to a minor. You know, the applicant has stated that she was the only one authorized to remove the tobacco from the display. So how are we to know that in good faith, 24 hours a day, when they're selling alcohol, that there is a person of sufficient responsibility to make the decisions around selling alcohol to anyone who comes in? Whether it's somebody who's already been drinking, whether they drove or walked across the street, whether the tobacco is being, you know, purchased by a person, for that person, or for somebody else, and where they go after the process? For me, I cannot separate the act of purveying, of selling, from the process and the person who is selling to the person who is walking in. It is, I do believe firmly that this particular space is not an ideal location for this type of sale, 24 hours a day. It is predominantly a, on the back end, a residential neighborhood. And I also want to believe that, you know, as you have pointed out, that they are trying to make a living. But it does seem a little curious that the application to sell alcohol seems to have come after they have lost the ability to serve flavored tobaccos, which are mostly, I will refrain from saying what I was going to say because that was subjective. But that is what I'm saying, that, again, if they had a clean record, they were, you know, had complied with all the rules, they didn't have any violations of selling tobacco to minors, I'd be all good with that, but I am not. So my, the motion stands as number one, no and no.
Okay. Do you know that 21 other, do we know, other than hearsay?
Can I ask through staff?
Just a point of clarification, do we know that to be factual?
Through the chair, to staff. Do we know how many purveyors of flavored tobaccos there are in Menlo Park?
No, we don't have that information able to be verified at this time.
I guess the answer is no.
Just curious. Commissioner Tate, good evening.
So I'd just like to confirm, what are the hours now? They close at midnight?
Yes, 12 would be when they close to the public.
Commissioner DeCarty?
To the chair, you had a question about if you knew that letter. Through the chair to staff, perhaps it's on page four of the attachment from Ms. Barr, which is the letter from the city Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I just tried to use my phone to magnify it, to read it. It's hard for me to read, but it certainly looks like it states very clearly about January 17th, and I believe this was posted by the owner on the window of the establishment. But I believe the letter states, as of December 17th, to Commissioner Doran's point, there's only a month, but as of January 17th, you have to be in compliance. It's hoped between now, December 26th, and January 17th, that you can make that happen. Copy of the ordinance is at this location, and please call us if you have any concerns. I wonder if that addresses your point about producing the letter, and if that might be helpful to you. And to, through staff, has my limited eyesight and capacity with my phone given this copy actually accurately read that information?
Yes, so actually, we have a much clearer photo of the letter, and I'm happy to read that in whole or part, if you would.
Yeah, would you be so kind, and this is not from Menlo Park, obviously, this is from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services.
Right.
So we're looking at the correct letter, which is cease and desist selling tobacco. This is the subject letter?
Yes.
Okay, would you be so kind as just to read it?
Sure. It's dated December 26, 2019. Dear store owner on December 17, 2019, the Menlo Park City Council adopted an ordinance restricting the sale of all tobacco products in pharmacies, and flavored tobacco products and electronic cigarettes, vaping products, and tobacco retailers in the city of Menlo Park. Free samples, coupons, out-of-package samples, and self-service displays of tobacco products are also restricted. The ordinance will go into effect on January 17, 2020. We hope that the time between the adoption of the ordinance and the effective enforcement date provides you with enough time to reduce your inventory and comply with the ordinance. A copy of the adopted ordinance can be found here, there's a link. Please contact us at tobacco prevention at smcgov.org, or a phone number if you have any questions about the ordinance, thank you for your compliance. And it is from the Tobacco Prevention Program Director for San Mateo County Health, Francesca Lomotan.
So it's a little bit academic, because I'm agreeing with it, but I don't, when I read this, it doesn't say, take it off the shelves right away. It doesn't say, clear your shelves of the stuff. What it says is, don't sell it, right? Now... It doesn't say, take the crap off your shelf, right? Hide the stuff. Don't let anyone see it, you know, stuff it underneath the bed. It doesn't say any of that. It says, don't sell it. So for that reason, it's tough. So for that reason, I'm not the maker, nor am I the second, so I can't control that. But I do think, because it, and I don't know what the second letter said from city councils, they might have said, get the crap off your shelf, I don't know. But this doesn't say that. So we've got a first, and we've got a second, and I got nothing.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Yes, yes, please come forward.
Later doesn't say that you have to take it out from the shelf.
No, let me, can I have a chance to say something? I heard all the things from the neighbor. First of all, the homeless people living in our backyard, that is totally false, okay? Our gates are always locked, and I have never seen that homeless people can get into the fence and live there, okay? And another thing they are saying about littering, okay? If you go to our property, it's always neat and clean. Our restroom, we are getting all the good comments, they said, we haven't seen this kind of clean restroom, okay? And now, I remember, one of the person who was here, he came to see me because he has a complaint, so I called him. I got his name and number from city of Menlo Park. And he came, that was sometimes middle of last year. And he said, we found, I said, what kind of litter did you find? Do you have any sample? Can you show it to me? He said, we find beer can. I said, we don't sell beer here. So if it's coming, it's coming from some other place. And some of the gentlemen, they have a complaint there, you live on Regal Court or Arnold Street, they're too far inside. People who come to the gas station, they don't walk around into the Regal Court or Arnold Street, okay? Now, another issue which you are making a big deal and pointing me out as I am not in compliances, we have a software that will, unless we check the, there, and we have a scanner, to the latest one, that will scan the ID. And if they are not, like, it's already software, if they are not 21, it will stop, block the cash register, we cannot do any sale. And we have the latest software, better than even El Rancho, okay? And nobody, if you have any proof, I think somebody's saying, we sold the cigarette to the minor, I like to know, when was it? In the last 10 years, as far as my memory I can recall, I have never seen this kind of thing. And if it is, even with the Philip 66, the oil company, the franchisee, they're going to cancel our franchisee. And I am having their franchisee there, we have a mystery shopper, they come without letting us know, and they will inspect the whole property. And we always score 99%, 95, about 95%. It's the most neat and clean, that's what I'm hearing from the customer. Everybody is happy. And selling the flavored tobacco, that is a totally false allegation. Because, yeah, that is, that was, the way you read it, I read it the same way, that I never thought about it, that's what it's saying, to remove the product from the premises, okay? So I said, we are not going to sell it, and we are not selling to anybody. So why I am getting accusation that I am selling flavored tobacco and I am not in compliances? Is anybody has any proof? They can show me a receipt, that yes, I have sold it. In my business, whenever anything goes, there is a receipt with my ID and my name or credit card. If they can prove me, I am ready to accept any kind of punishment or any kind of things you're going to accuse me, I will take it. But I am a nuclear physicist and civil engineer, I work for Bectel Power as a senior engineer. And this kind of accusation is a shame to me, okay? And I know how to follow all the rules and regulation. And telling somebody is coming, there is a, all this needle, this thing, I don't see those things in my premises. If I, if we see those kind of needles, then Philip 66 will cancel my franchisee. I will not be their franchisee for the last since 1985. An oil company has a very strict rules and regulation. It's not El Rancho Market. And another thing I'm listening, the VA, I do have a great respect and care for that. And the El Rancho Market is closer to the VA hospital. If somebody has to go there and get drunk, they have an option, going to the El Rancho Market. What difference it makes, why they're going to walk another 400 feet and come to my place to get drunk? And to tell you frankly, the VA people are my customer, and they are, I have never seen anybody misbehaving at my location. And some of the people are disabled, they come with the nurse. So I really don't believe that if there is a liquor here, so they will be getting drunk and walking around and doing all those unauthorized activity on the street, I really don't think so. And getting involved in an accident, yes, Willow Road is a busy road. But I have some pictures I have taken, I have videos. O'Keefe Street is, there is no traffic. My customer don't go O'Keefe. They usually come from, like, they can exit and enter into the O'Keefe, but they usually go from Willow Road. So Willow Road is always busy. And about parking the delivery truck, I like to see the picture. How do, how do they know they are coming to my place? My people always park, I have a designated area. Even the gasoline truck comes, they have to park here, Coke, Pepsi, 7-Up, they know where to park. So whatever they are seeing, showing the picture, I like to see the picture, whether they are my delivery people or they are coming some other places. And there is more likely if their driveway is getting litter from the El Rancho grocery store. Gas station people, they don't go and walk around two blocks and waste their time, that I have never seen, even, I will not do that. Because we don't have any, our parking area stays empty all the time. I can show you the pictures, midnight, middle of the day, or any time, nobody parks their car. They park their car on the pump, they get the gas, and they leave. And whatever they have to pick up, like soda, whatever they want to do, quick. Nobody just parks their car and walk around two blocks or three blocks, about a mile, and then they come back and pick up their car. No, we don't allow this thing there. And about the control, how do we control the sale? I know how to control. There was a time, we used to have six or seven gas stations, okay? So I know how to control. So I am totally disagreeing with that, because I have the latest back office software, I can see, I have a video camera, wherever I am, I can see the thing. And another thing, that nobody is authorized to take the things, I never said that. They are authorized, but they cannot deal with the $10,000-plus dollar material with my supplier. That's the thing, they are not allowed. That's all I have to say. If you have to go with that, that's fine, but the discussion is going on, is totally out of the way, that El Rancho people, they can sell alcohol, the VA hospital people, the patient will not get drunk, but they drink that beer from my place, they are going to get drunk, and they're going to act crazy. It does not make me any sense, okay? And 24 hours, we were 24, even if we don't do 24 hours, that's fine, that's okay. But I was just doing it just for our business point of view, but just to get the accusation, somebody goes there and sees the flavored tobacco in my shelf, does not mean that I have sold it. And somebody making the accusation that she's not in compliances, what is I'm not in compliances? That those were not taken out of the shelf? That is the noncompliance, or I'm selling flavored tobacco? That is noncompliances. For that to nail me down, I really don't agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs?
It may seem reactive at this point, but what I had sought to say some 10 minutes ago was that in making my second, I did not bring in the tobacco issue, and I'd like to be clear that I would vote to deny alcohol sales during the current store hours, regardless of any tobacco issue, because I don't feel that it is necessary such that it would override the ABC's basic concentration, and I don't see the benefit. So just to clarify, at least for my vote in my second, I'm not tying the two together.
But they are tied together in the recommended action?
But they are tied together in the recommended action?
Yes. And I appreciate between Mr. DeCarty and staff raising this issue. I would actually be more comfortable if, following the last sentence, it added that, "And no overriding need or benefit has been demonstrated."
And in, in keeping the not, um, not demonstrated strict compliance with regulations regulating the sale of tobacco, keep that in there.
That is clearly, for staff and some members of this commission, that is relevant. So that would be one of our reasons.
And yours as well.
But, but for me, it's, my reason is that there's no overriding need or benefit to increase the concentration per ABC's formula.
Got it. And I think that's a good point. I mean, I think when the discussion, discussion is, we're be, we're being additive to alcohol sales in the neighborhood, is it necessary? And that becomes what it, what it turns on. Yeah. So I will offer that, should you strike the alcohol? Tobacco, right. I was gonna, let me just think through this. Should you strike the tobacco provision? And they are good neighbors in a year. They still may meet the same result. But if they're denied, and they come back again, and founded or not, they won't be precluded because of the, they won't be prejudiced by the tobacco language in here? Should they come back a year from now? And they are a good neighbor and they do these things? We at least afford them the right to come back at a later date and see if the community has the same experience of them down the road. It doesn't mean there's going to be a different outcome. But it seems like, to me, a fair opportunity for them to come back and have another discussion five years from now, for instance, if they chose to do something, if they were the best neighbor out there. So I'll just offer that for, for a thought.
So to the, to the chair.
Yes.
So if, hello? Yes. So if, my motion as it stands, I'm, I'm not inclined to change it. But for clarification, the motion that I have made does not preclude them from coming back in a year and reapplying for the use permits. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, through the chair. Would the maker entertain adding the phrase that not demonstrated an overriding need or benefit?
Yes. Yes, I would be comfortable adding that.
That, that would make it easier for, for me.
So at the, so it does not end with the word consumption. It continues with? Is that correct? It does not end with the consumption? Just say that again.
And does not demonstrate an overriding need or benefit for beer and wine sales?
And overriding need or benefit for beer Okay. That, that's your, that's your, okay. Is it first, accepting it? Okay. So we've got maker accepting, the seconds. Looking for any other commissioner comments because I'll call for a vote. Call for a vote. See no other lights on, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion as the maker, Kennedy and the second are Riggs, and with an amendment offered by Commissioner Riggs and accepted by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? No one? The motion passes, excuse me, the recommended actions are passed with revision. And I'm sorry, I didn't check in with staff. Were you clear on the revisions that Commissioner Riggs is doing? Okay. So there's no, no, great. So we're voted. We have unanimous to deny the, to go with the new findings as put here in recommended actions, which is effectively deny the, the use permit for the sale of alcohol on premise and to extend the hours of operation. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Riggs.
Could I add my thanks to staff for providing the alternative denial findings? It, it, it helps a lot when something might go one way or the other that, that we have something to rely on. Thank you.
Believe you didn't give me what I wanted. It's illogical. There's no evidence. You guys have a low bar. Proceeding, proceeding to, oh my goodness, we still have regular business. G, now, we'll try to get out of here by, certainly by 11:00. Does anyone need five minutes just to stand, stretch your legs, get some water? Let's do that. Let's give, let's give three minutes just to walk around and clear your noggin, and then we'll come back and wrap this up.
Oh, I can look. That one's also all gender. And there's one behind where the video is too. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The secret door?
Yeah, there's no, there's no telephoning with making babies.
It varies. I think it's off.
Don't make babies sure. Don't make babies sure about it. It's a, it's definitely a hands-on.
I mean, this last one was kind of unique. When we got, like, information at the last moment.
That's like the best star.
Stafford was published. But, yeah. Usually there's just one recommendation. But I mean, you know, the commissioners can vote as they want. Sure.
You, you just say it's not for sale. So I didn't gavel this out. So I wanted to state for the record that we took time at 10:18 and we're re-zooming at 10:24. The place we are on the agenda is for G, regular business. This is G1, Housing Element Annual Report, City of Menlo Park. Opportunity to consider and provide comments and/or recommendation to the city council on the 2019 annual report on the status and implementation of the city's housing element, 2015 to 2023. Who is the lead on this? That away. Good evening.
Good evening.
And I have your names written down, so hold on a second. You're not Mr. Turner, you're not Mr. Smith. Are you Michael?
I am Michael.
Good evening.
And I also go by Mike. Last name's Noche.
No, I couldn't pronounce your last name. So I'm gonna let you lead on that.
No worries.
And with you is Rhonda?
Yes.
Hi, Rhonda. Welcome to the Menlo Park team. Good evening.
And I will, I do have a presentation. Again, my name's Mike Noche. I'm with the Housing Division. Rhonda is our Deputy Director of Community Development. I will move quickly through our presentation. I've got about 10 slides to share with you, but I will move through them quickly. This is our Housing Element Annual Progress Report. We'll give you some background, summary of our current housing production, as well as some milestones that are in the annual progress report. This is meant to be an overview. The annual progress report can be somewhat difficult to read in regards to how small the form prints and is provided. But happy to answer questions as we go through this overview. The housing element, again, is a requirement for all jurisdictions. The, it does go through in quite a bit of detail and is available on the city's website as far as a plan to meet our current housing needs. We also receive a regional housing needs allocation from the state. That current number for our housing element, which is 2015 to 2023 is the current housing element, is 655 dwelling units. In the next housing element, that number will most likely change, and we are expecting it to go up. The annual progress report is due on April 1st of every year. Following it going to the Planning Commission this evening, it will go to the city council on March 24th. The APR, APR tracks the life cycle of an application. If a development doesn't have any action items, so if it didn't receive approval or construction permits, it would not be reflected in the APR itself. So there could be gaps in regards to when it is reflected in the APR. That being said, staff still, still tracks those numbers. And I do have some figures to share with you this evening as part of the presentation. As of, for 2019, our current number is 196 dwelling units. And these are units that received building permits. And that is how is, is reported in the APR. 183 of those units were attributed to 1300 El Camino Real, also known as the Station 1300 project, which included 20 BMRs, 16 of which are low and, or, excuse me, 14 of which are low and six are moderate. We are also one of 28 jurisdictions in the state of California that are still under the SB 35 exemption. That could also change in the future. But currently, we are maintaining our RENA numbers. We also had four ADUs that were submitted in 2019. We do expect that number to increase with the changes in state law. That was a decrease from 2018's report. Here is the RENA allocation broken down, given each year in our current housing element cycle. For the RENA allocation, the way the 655 adds up, we had 233 very low units was part of our allocation, 129 low-income units, 143 moderate, and 150 above moderate, giving us the 655 total to date. And 2019 is listed here. And this PowerPoint will be part of the minutes as well, which will go out to the public. As part of the total units to date, we are, let's see, I have those percentages here. So for the very low, we are 63.5% complete. For the low, we're 41% complete. And moderate, we're 7% complete. We have by far exceeded our above moderate level, which our allocation was 150 units. And we have 947 units to date that were permitted and most of which complete. And then that final column is the total remaining, which are based off the percentages that I just listed. And I'm happy to go back to these numbers if any questions arise after the end of the presentation. As far as what I mentioned previously, as far as units that might not appear, appear on the 2019 APR, we, under construction or approved, we have 439 market rate units, six moderate, 32 low, and 58 very low or extremely low. In addition, we have around 3,200 units in our application pipeline as well. So there is a lot in the pipeline. And more to come to the Planning Commission as well. Four developments to date have been submitted under the SB 330 streamlining, which will bring, move them through the process of review quite a bit quicker. For the sake of time, I won't go into that in detail. Milestones, I will make this pretty brief. The city council did approve a tenant relocation assistance ordinance. The City Council did approve a Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinance, of which does minimize the disruption to tenants facing relocation. It is for households at 80% AMI or lower, and only on parcels with five or more units. That does entitle the applicant, excuse me, the resident, the renter, if they do meet some of the qualifications, and there are more listed in the ordinance, they are entitled to three to four months' rent reimbursement, three for most circumstances, and four an additional month, making it four for special circumstances. The City Council also, in 2019, approved, ahead of AB 1482 taking effect, approved the Rent Limits and Just Cause Urgency Ordinance, which went into effect in November, and this is ahead of the state law taking effect in January 1st, 2020. So it mirrored that state law, which basically states that, and this is state law now, a maximum of 9%, which will be changed based on the Consumer Price Index per year, but it's 5% plus CPI, which is 9% for San Mateo County. So rent cannot increase more than 9% per year. It also does have a no-fault eviction component as well, which could entitle a renter to one-month reimbursement. We also had two funding agreements, one for 1300 Willow Road, which will result in 58 net new units, and those will be at the extremely low, very low range. That'll have 140 total units as part of that development. 6.7 million was approved by City Council. We also had a preservation project for 635,000 that was also approved for Willow Court at 1105 and 1141 Willow Road for six existing BMR units. We also created a homeless outreach team, which focuses on some of the vulnerable population in our community. This team is made up of the Housing Division, Police Department, and a nonprofit called Life Moves. They do coordinated outreach, provide resources, and try to present a path for anyone who needs that assistance, and they do work with individuals on a case-by-case basis and do outreach in the community with those individuals to hopefully build that trust and provide resources. There was also part of the ASIC grant, also known as the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant. The city is assisting Mid Penn Housing on their 1300 Willow Road project, which, a component of the funding, goes to the housing production, and then a component, a smaller component of that, is reserved for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, which needed coordination from the city, Caltrans, and the applicant. So we were, staff was helping with that and spending time assisting in that process. To wrap up our milestones, we also offered a first-time homebuyer workshop back in March of 2019 with Heart of San Mateo County, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust. This offers first-time homebuyers a 5% down payment and the ability, a better opportunity to potentially purchase a home in the area in San Mateo County. We also had multiple outreach opportunities. Staff attended multiple festivals, community fairs, and the downtown block party, providing housing resources and information to the public, which is always well-received. And this is staff from multiple departments, not just community development, but we also provided display boards and provided housing information. We are also with the Senate Bill 2, the Planning Grant Program. Staff did apply for this grant, and we are preliminarily approved for up to $160,000. Staff outlined a couple areas to accelerate housing production, those being to encourage ADU development, either zoning amendments, or also creating navigation tools for homeowners to make it just a clear, provide clarity on the process, is part of the component that were in the application, as well as just general zoning amendments. So this is a very quick overview of the APR to provide you highlights. I believe in the past, we've given you copies of the APR, which are, as I mentioned, sometimes hard to read, given the formatting of the Housing Element APR. That being said, we wanted to provide you with a presentation this year to give you some of the highlights. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner DeGardney.
So this is my first time through on this. Just describe, I guess, what's the purpose of this annual report? What are we, what are we trying to understand? My take is, first of all, congratulations and thank you, an extraordinary amount of work. There's a lot going on around here, and appreciate the presentation and certainly the milestones and all of that. So it's not in that context, but I'm just trying to understand what the intent is, given all the activity for us as the Planning Commission of the City Council, to take away from this report, if you could help with that.
Absolutely. So to start, it is a requirement. The state requires us to report annually on how we're doing with our housing production, and that will hopefully provide insight on how we're doing and the laws that are brought forth through the legislative process. So it's really a progress report on our housing production every year. That being said, the RENA numbers that I had mentioned, that's our requirement for the number of housing units that we need to produce, which is why we're part of the SB 35 streamlining, which not all cities in the state are meeting those requirements. That being said, we do think those requirements will increase with the stress of needing more housing, so we are expecting those to increase in the next Housing Element cycle, which staff will be working on in the new Housing Element in the coming years. So I hope that brought a little bit of clarity. I'm happy to answer additional questions.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Couple, first of all, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Good to see both of you. We haven't had the pleasure of having either of you here before, so welcome.
You're welcome.
Couple of questions. You referenced general zoning amendments as initiative to be potentially undertaken. What are those general zoning amendments that you were referencing? What will they address?
That's a great question. Do you want to take it out? Yes, I believe that's in regard to SB 2.
It was the final bullet point.
Yeah.
Last slide.
Yeah.
City Activities Proposed Potential Zoning Amendments. Is that in relation to ADU, or is it something else?
So, thank you. Great question. That's in relation to the planning grant, so under SB 2, that we submitted a planning grant application for $160,000. We had to identify programs or activities that accelerated or had the capacity to accelerate housing production. So we identified two specific projects. One of them was for, was related to ADUs, and that was to amend the zoning, not only to come in with state compliance, but also to do a more comprehensive zoning update around ADUs. In addition to that, as Mike talked about earlier, we had proposed developing some user navigation tools to make it easier for residents to navigate the process of getting an ADU permitted. So things like developing a checklist, or pre-approved floor plan, et cetera. So that was one of the zoning amendments, was related to the ADUs, and the other one was looking at potential zoning amendments in the El Camino Real downtown area to look at potential amendments that might increase housing production, so possibly doing some upzoning in those areas.
Yeah, let's talk about that a little bit. Is that at all baked, is that all formulated in terms of that?
It isn't yet. However, it is in context with what our next RENA cycle, which is the sixth RENA cycle. So the sixth RENA cycle is anticipated to be the most difficult to comply with of all the cycles to date. All communities are anticipating a significant increase in their RENA allocations, and we have to, every city will have to identify how to, how to identify where those housing units will be built. So that's going to require all cities to look at their zoning. And so we anticipate looking at that zoning, not only in the El Camino corridor, but in other areas of the city to comply with that, along with the development of the new housing element. So it's not fully baked, but El Camino Real downtown corridor is an area that's on the transit corridor and an area that could potentially be considered for amending the zoning, to increase the zoning.
How does that cycle in with the downtown-specific plan biennial, biennial review? This would feed potentially into that biennial review cycle for, for instance, upzoning, or would it be a different initiative?
It may connect, but this is separate. We were looking at this separately. We were looking that this is an opportunity and area. There was some discussion, and there was a council priority item that was kind of deprioritized, but is still on the council's work plan, which is to look at downtown parking lots for potential development of housing. So that was one of the thoughts around looking at some of the zoning downtown and perhaps doing some amendments, as well as just increasing the zoning along El Camino Real to allow greater density. So with regard to the biennial, I'm not, we didn't really, I'm not totally familiar with what that is, but I don't think, we didn't include that in this, but we can look at how.
And I suspect the work product might feed in that. Every two years, go back and take a look at what's working and what's not working.
Yeah.
And I have some thoughts on that, but what I wanted to do, because I could go on for a while here, we have public comment, we have Ms. Grove, so I'm gonna call for public comment now, because you've been so patient with us so far this evening. So I'm gonna open public comment, and, oh, I've got a card from Karen Grove. Good evening. Please state your name and address or political organization.
A resident of Menlo Park and a member of the Housing Commission, and I'm actually here speaking on behalf of the Housing Commission tonight. We reviewed this at our meeting last week, yes, and I just wanted to highlight some aspects of it that we discussed, that we sort of lifted up and noted. On the positive side, we are building a lot more market rate housing than is required by the RENA numbers, which are kind of ridiculously low, actually, but we are building six times we have, in the report, we're currently permitted six times as much as is required for the entire cycle. So we're way ahead on that. However, where we build those homes and for whom we build them matters as well. And most of the housing that we're producing in our city is on the bayside, where there isn't great access to transit and there are no services. So on the "we can improve" side of things, we need to be building housing more equally for everyone. You can see in the numbers that we are not meeting the goal for very low income, low income, and especially for moderate income, where we pretty much haven't met, we are missing 132 out of 143 required. And on the very low income, that includes the extremely low income category, and I was at a recent roundtable thing on homelessness, and it was noted that for, even when cities are doing a fantastic job of housing the homeless, more people enter homelessness than are being housed, even in the best-performing cities. And that the people most at risk of becoming homeless are generally earning, but they're earning extremely low incomes. So that, and that number is 84% of people who are at risk of homelessness are in the extremely low income category. So that's just to say that the housing element doesn't call, or the RENA numbers don't specifically call out extremely low income, but it doesn't mean it's not important. It's very important, and we don't have any of it beyond what's in these numbers in the So the Housing Commission noted that we are overachieving in market rate housing, but that only serves the top 10% to 20% of earners, and we're underachieving in the other areas, so we want to focus there. We would love to partner with you in terms of the zoning, when we have the opportunity to upzone near transit, downtown near services, for the very low, extremely low, low income and moderate income earners. And that could be deed restricted by working with an affordable housing provider or builder, or it could be deed restricted ADUs, or it could be non-deed restricted ADUs are considered in the, in one of, one of the low income categories. We also discussed the idea of having our NOFA, Notice of Funds Available, become not just a regular annual, rather than the minimum requirement biannual process, but also have an over-the-counter process, so that through any time, somebody can come and submit a proposal, in addition to an annual application, or sort of an annual pooled set of applications. And that we hope that the city will be aggressive and proactive in pursuing the development of housing at the USGS site. And so those are the, sort of, just wanted to lift up kind of our conversation and the things we wanted to recommend going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to give public comment, please come forward. Seeing no other public comment and reaching but having no other additional cards, I will hereby close public comment, bring it back up to the dais, and Commissioner Tate.
I'd just like to really thank the Housing Commission for all their hard work, and of course, the staff. And I totally agree with everything Commissioner Grove said, and hopefully we will be able to support in moving forward. And I also hope that some way in here, we'll be able to make housing a priority for council, because I feel like it's slipping further and further, further down, and we really do need to get a move on at this point. Can you put the slide back up with the numbers, please? And it's actually, right now, I think the very low and the low, those are primarily just Mid Penn's projects, right? That's a question.
So the very low would be a combination of extremely low and very low, which would, most of that portion is related to Mid Penn projects.
Okay. Yeah, and hopefully we'll be able to find space with the parking lots or elsewhere on city-owned property to beef those numbers up, because definitely above moderate is just, it's on steroids and everything else is lagging. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioners Kennedy.
I also want to echo Commissioner Tate's, thanks to the staff and to the Housing Commission. You know, sort of anecdotal experience, I recently started looking for a new place to live, and I was not surprised that it is almost impossible to find an affordable three-bedroom home of any size anywhere in the city. And there is significant housing stock that's being built that is beautiful, and it's two bedrooms, and it's tiny, but it's completely unaffordable. And, you know, I think, I mean, this is just sort of a, you know, sort of a statement, like, I don't know how we're gonna fix this, right? Because it gets more expensive to build, and, you know, people are building for who, you know, for the jobs that are being created, and those jobs are getting younger and younger, and the housing stock that is available is getting older, and there's no incentive to protect the existing housing stock that can fit a small family, right? And I just wonder, you know, whether it's, you know, a priority for council, which is clearly not, although people like to talk about it, like that it's a priority, you know, but the numbers don't lie, right? The numbers tell us we have, I would say, in the above moderate, I would say, that's overwhelmingly exceeded, right? Like, that's ridiculously exceeded. That is horrifically exceeded, when we've built almost no housing for people who work to keep the city, to keep our communities moving, you know? And I don't know, I mean, it's like, I don't know how we're gonna fix this. I don't know if it can be fixed, you know? I don't know what it's gonna take. I do know that the people who are, who do still own that older housing stock can't make those prices any lower, but those prices are the lowest that you're gonna find, and it's the most, you know, nostalgic-looking housing you can find, it's not updated. And I know that there are a lot of landlords in this city who are trying their level best to have some income on those properties, but not gouge everybody out of it, so that people can actually live here. And if, and if... And if, and if we don't try, also try to figure out how to better apportion new housing stock to other parts of this city, we deserve what we get.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I'd also like to add my thanks to Commissioner Grove and to the Housing Commission for all your work, and really appreciate you being here four-plus hours tonight in order to be able to give us the summary, and it's hugely helpful. You know, as we think about it into the future, there, it's all interrelated, but density is clearly a piece of this that we have to do, and I believe we have to look at density at the place nobody wants to look at density, which is where you zone single-family houses right now. And we are doing this in exactly the opposite direction, where we are approving what were formerly duplexes, we tear them down, and then we put up single-family homes. So density in all its forms in all places, including in looking at the most uncomfortable place, has to be on the agenda. Transportation has to be on the agenda, and the incentives for transportation to get people in and out of here, because there are way too many jobs for any total amount of housing long-term, and we are failing miserably at that. And we fail at that in the micro, per all the frustration earlier this evening, and we're failing deeply in the macro on that. But then the third one is what we get all the time here, which is not a surprise to me, that we are way overproducing on above moderate, because above moderate is what comes to us because it pencils out. Every single time we get one of these conversations about building something and put a below-market-rate unit in there, the only thing we can do is above moderate because it pencils out. And so ultimately, we're going to have to change the penciling out, so it incentivizes extremely low, very low, low, and moderate if we're going to get there. And right now, we beautifully succeeded in putting together a structure that pencils out above moderate, so we know how to do that, and that's going to be, do we have the courage? And do we have the courage, working with the city council, to put in place regulations that now get the rest of that taken care of? I think all those three things have to go together. I think this report beautifully illustrates that, and that the city council should be able to read that same thing in there, and the dedication of the Housing Commission to help bring that to the city council, I really applaud. So thank you.
Couple questions, thank you. How much money currently is in the BMR fund?
So the last report would have been a part of the rehabilitation approval, and I believe at that point in time, which was November of 2019, I believe we were reporting that there was around just over nine million in available funds. We are expecting, and I don't have that offhand, but I think roughly to date, we're with other projects, funds coming in, I think we're going to be closer to 15 million, I believe.
And, so you've, you've got a NOFA process, right? And whether it's closed, or whether it's open-ended, multi-year, however that's, that process is, you've got, over whatever that period is, rolling applications for projects. First, are those projects, in order to receive Menlo Park BMR funds, do the projects, must the projects be located in the jurisdiction of Menlo Park?
Yes, they have to be within city limits.
The sites to be able to do that, housing element call, you identify sites, opportunity sites, and you go through that process. So you'll, you'll have 15-ish million dollars. Do you see that funding ground-up development in the city? How do you see that being spent? And do we have the sites for that? And I could go deeper than that, but I'll just start with those questions.
I'll let Rhonda chime in on this as well. In the BMR guidelines, it does outline multiple uses for the fund. I don't have those in front of me, but if Rhonda wants to shed some light on this as well, that'd be great.
Yeah, so to offer a few things, so the, the NOFA includes several activities that the funds can be used for. So it's preservation of existing affordable housing, which is usually rehab, to keep that housing in, in good condition. It's new construction of affordable housing. It's site acquisition. So those are the primary activities. It's acquisition rehab. So sometimes there's something for sale, an apartment building, those funds could be used by, say, a nonprofit to buy a building and then convert it and deed restrict it to affordable. So the one thing I can tell you about funds is 15 million doesn't buy a lot here in Menlo Park. It's not enough to buy a site. We've, I've had many conversations with affordable housing developers that are working jointly with market rate developers, trying to identify sites where they could do a joint project. 15 million just is not enough to buy a site. So what, the strategies that do work is when cities actually acquire a site or have land. Land is so much more vital for nonprofit developers to come, to attract them to come and develop, because then we can transfer the land to them at a dollar. So one of the things that the Housing Commission, some of the subcommittees have been talking about, is looking at some other strategies of maybe identifying some sites that are for sale as we, as we, our BMR funds kind of grows. So there's, there's different strategies can be used, but definitely, we, we've, we've put the funds out through, through a NOFA process every two years. The last cycle, there were only two applications and one withdrew. So the city that I worked at previously, we had over a period of years acquired, this is just an example, acquired three sites near the downtown, put them together, and then cleaned them, demolished the buildings, they were office buildings, and, and then put that out as a NOFA. We had seven really strong proposals from developers to build on that site, and they weren't asking for a dollar from us to do it. So they just needed the land. So land is really, really a successful strategy in getting affordable housing developed.
Right, and do we have that in Menlo Park? I mean, there's two strategy, door number one is, you've got excess land, wherever that resides in Menlo Park, whether it's an old area yard. Or door number two is purchasing that site, and then, you know, you're building your capital stack, right? So you've got your, your leverage, my assumption is you're leveraging three and a half-ish to one, if you want to do this right. So you've got your capital stack, whether it's pre-dev or acquisition or perm, however your money goes in, but you've got someone else coming in with three other dollars, like for instance, in Santa Clara County. You'll have, as you move up the stack, any county money, for instance, for the Mezzera bond, that goes out. It's a three to three and a half to one, because you're always having to put in the different levels of the stack, and you're adding CBD funds or whatever funds come in. Is that something, Menlo Park, I mean, how do you, since we don't have that ability to have an excess parcel from the roads and airports and then build on it, do a dollar back for, sale lease back to a developer, what do we do here in Menlo Park where we don't have the dirt that's excess? What, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, we're looking for opportunities. So when a site comes up for sale, looking for opportunities and having partners, nonprofit partners, that are agile and ready to move on those sites, because as a city, it's hard for a city to be agile and use funds to go and acquire a site. Those nonprofits are better, are better positioned to do that. So we've been working with our nonprofit partners to try to look for those sites, and we continue to try to build those relationships, and, you know, and that's, that's something that I'm, that I'm trying to do, is bring some of those developers that are building all over the Bay Area, the nonprofit affordable housing developers, to, to Menlo Park to look at what we have available. We certainly have sites identified in the housing element that are opportunity sites, but those sites have to be on the market.
Right.
They have to be available for sale. So we're trying to look at what is available for sale and see if there's an opportunity there to make something happen. So that's where we're at now, and we continue to look for ways to, to grow that.
In terms of densification, when you look at the downtown specific plan, and you look at how it's prescriptive in terms of what can be done on Santa Cruz Avenue or Oak Grove or Menlo Avenue, I see a lot of potential for upzoning there and for densifying there, but it's going to take a whole lot of political will to be able to strike village character from the downtown specific plan and say, you know what, these third-floor setbacks and first-floor retail requirements, or only having certain amount of office, going in and saying, we want to do a wholesale upzone in these areas to get the density around the train areas, is, is a, is a hard slog. I mean, I think you're going to find as many people who say it's overcrowded and we've got too much there, that say we need to do more there, but fact of the matter is, if we're going to add meaningful density to Menlo Park, I don't see where else it goes. Do you have any other ideas on that?
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, the, the next, the sixth cycle of the RENA is going to be the most difficult that we've, at any city's ever encountered. We've seen San Diego has gone through the process, and some other counties have gone through the process, and they've seen anywhere in the range of 200% increase to their RENA numbers. We were thrown a number of around 10,000 units. You saw 655 up there. We're being, the number 10,000 has been thrown around as what might be the new allocation for Menlo Park. That is going to require Menlo Park to look very strategically at where we can cite that housing, what areas that can be cited. And in this new housing element, there are two new requirements. So there's the affirmatively, affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement, which requires the city to look at where the, where affordable housing is cited within its city. So it can't be concentrated in one area. And if it is, then we have to look at how to kind of deconcentrate it and make sure that it's, it goes into the other areas where it is not currently. So that's going to be something that has to be looked at closely in this new process with the development of the housing element, and then the environmental justice element, which is, kind of has similar guidelines. It looks at environmental justice, but it looks at socioeconomic issues, like, again, where, where is that affordable housing located? Right now, we have opportunity in, you know, where, where we have development going on, which is leading to a concentration, because there's opportunity there, but we're getting a lot of affordable housing in one area and not over on the west side of, of Menlo Park. So because the new state law around housing elements has now comes with some enforcement mechanisms, which were not there before, cities are going to have to comply with some of these new requirements that didn't exist in the past. In the past, you could get around saying, well, we don't, you know, it doesn't work over there, our neighborhood doesn't want that over there, but we're going to have to look very strategically, citywide, of what areas can, can be, can, can have higher density. And a lot of that is, is directed to be near transit, near transit corridors. So the natural place is downtown in El Camino Real, when we're looking at kind of west, west Menlo Park. So those are processes that we'll be looking at and we'll be working on with this new housing element cycle, which is, which is a big shift, a big change from, from past. So in the past, it might be, it might be optional for the city to do something. Going forward, we're going to say, this is what we have to do, and, and then, and then we're going to have some options around that to, to make decisions on.
And let me, so tailing off of that, if San Mateo County doesn't have an affordable housing bond, which provides money to the cities, that allows for creating the, the different types of soft money, so that you can have the different developers in there, are we going to get meaningful development and development projects done here without a county bond to backstop some of the, for instance, residual seats money or?
I'm probably not going to be very popular for saying this, but money isn't the issue for development here. Development is, is land, is, is available land. So again, we, we have money and state tax credit financing, there's plenty of money available for developing affordable housing, especially at the extremely low and very low levels. So that, that money is out there, and it's over the counter money. Affordable housing organizations can go today and apply for that money and get all the money they need to, to build, but the money they don't have is the money for land. So that's probably the best area for us to focus on, is where is there opportunity for us to acquire land and work with those nonprofit partners, to give them the funds to help them buy that land? But there, there seems to be a, plenty of money available right now for a nonprofit to cobble together to, to acquire land.
So Rhonda, in the quest for, for land and nonprofit partners that you said you've been, you know, trying to reach out to, have the parking garages, the parking lots been considered as land? Because that's owned by the city, and so, can you tell us a little bit about, about that?
Sure. So last year, when I started here, it was, the city council was going through their prioritization, and the downtown parking lot site was one of the items that was moved to lower priority, but it's still on the list, and there has been some discussion. It's come up and through some of this year's council priorities setting, earlier discussions in January. So I'm hopeful that that will continue and maybe will be something that will be considered. I think with the new housing element cycle, it has to be considered, because it is city-owned land. We need to look at all of the city-owned inventory, land inventory, and, and see what, evaluate where, where housing can be developed.
And I'm sorry, can you clarify for us again, when is that cycle? Because that's pushing out quite far, isn't it?
So we're, we are now, right now, having to commence the work on this new cycle. The new cycle will start in 2023, but it will take us the next two years to develop all of our plans to prepare our housing element, because housing elements require us, typically require some zoning amendments.
So how do we fast-track? Because 2023 is, is too far to start considering the, the city-owned land. So what is your recommendation for getting it fast-tracked, being that you are the housing person?
I, I think it needs to be a city council priority, so I think, you know, it needs to, city council needs to identify that as a, as a high priority.
Okay, so advocating to city council. Okay, so then how, how would we have something, so is the Housing Commission and your department working on something, or has any studies been done to be able to present to city council to say, hey, this is a good idea for us to take a, a look at before the close of the next housing element, which is 2023, which is essentially three years from now?
I'd like to say yes, but the Housing Division is right here before you, and we do have, we do have work items that were priorities for us, that we've been working on. So we take direction from city council based on what they, you know, what they want us to work on. And so this past year, we've been working on things like short-term rental regulation along with the Housing Commission, and some other items, some other studies have been going on. So once, once something's identified as high priority, that's how we then shift our resources.
So I think I remember when I was on the Housing Commission, that Commissioner Merriman mentioned that there were resources out there that wouldn't cost a lot to evaluate and do scoping, and maybe it was Housing Leadership Council. So I wonder if that's something that the Housing Commission can work with another resource outside to at least get scoping done, to see what, what's possible and present it, because then that, that way, it's not affecting staff time necessarily, but it's at least trying to put something in motion. This is just a question, because I don't know if that's possible or not.
It's certainly possible, absolutely. Scoping is possible, and that's a great idea, and that would, that would give the city some information to be able to make decisions. I would just caution, though, that any kind of study, it, it doesn't mean that staff doesn't have to do any work. The city has all kinds of procurement requirements. We have to go out to bid, there has to be consultants that have the resources, we have to identify budget, we have to enter into contract, so, and then we, we have to oversee all of that work. So there is overseeing, that, that becomes a project for us, a worthwhile one, certainly.
Right, and if I'm not mistaken, I, I think the cost was relatively low, and I think, if I remember right, and maybe Commissioner Grove can help with this, that Mid-Pin might have done some work around this area once before, so that there, there is like pieces of this work already done. Not sure.
Commissioner Dorn.
One of the slides in the presentation mentioned the application for an SB2 grant to look at zoning ordinance changes. What's the, we got a preliminary approval on that, apparently. What's the timeline for getting that money, getting cash in the bank?
Well, I'd like it today. We just received a, the preliminary, well, it's basically an approval. They've already approved our application, they've reviewed it, they've approved everything in it. Right now, they have a, a number of, of applications that are approved, and they, the formality is going to the loan committee, and then the loan committee makes the final, final approval, and then they generate the letter. So we're waiting for that letter, and they, probably within 30 to 60 days, we would be receiving the letter and the grant agreement for those, those funds.
Thanks. Commissioner Riggs.
I think Commissioner Kennedy was before me.
Let's just come this way.
Shut up, Henry.
No, don't shut up, Doc.
I wanted to just make note, I'm not sure how much use you will find in this, but the parking lots were studied for housing of... the parking lots were studied for housing approximately, I believe, 2015. And as I recall, since it would be very, very difficult to move forward and not replace the parking that is there now, and then to provide the parking for the housing even at our reduced needs, say, one per unit, that it came out to be six or seven-story buildings. So the viability sort of slid away once the pencil went into place. But I'll just put that forward, that might be a useful starting point. And then regarding, Rhonda, you made the statement that, I know you didn't want to be quoted, but that money is not the problem, it's about land. We have land on El Camino, which could be repurposed. Every time I look at the Charles Schwab building, I wish it were repurposed. And 700 El Camino, that is basically the Menlo Park Strip Mall, is a great deal of available land. If either one of those properties could be, in the case of 700, a partnership would have to buy the land. In the case of Charles Schwab, that may already be in city land. I don't remember if it's just next to city land, or if it is city land, and the lease would have, leases would have to be bought out. But the, the bottom line here, and frequently the irony, particularly in the case of our adjacent, our neighbor cities, is that the housing need is driven primarily by the office buildings. And I see it repeatedly, city leaders in other cities making great drama about the need for housing, and then the next item on the agenda is approving a million square feet of office. So the balance is very fixed there. I mean, it's not 100%, but it's probably 90%. And I think this city may be taking the leadership because I haven't seen much office space approved lately. And we could address this directly if we really want to, and buy some older office buildings and knock them down. So I'll just throw that out as a proposal.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Sort of tagging on to what Commissioner Riggs just said, you know, when you're driving up El Camino all the way up to Belmont, you know, and where there used to be parking lots and empty lots, now there's significant amount of apartment buildings. Some of it's not the best looking, but you know, your eye does get used to it, and you see just how many houses, how many units of housing have been produced. But I don't think it's just on the rail line side of El Camino. I think there has to be a counterpoint on the other side. You know, so for downtown, let's just say we could, you know, continue the Stanford project and then get rid of that Bevmo Shopping Center and go up pretty high, and then across the street in this, in the Safeway Shopping Center, we actually redeveloped that like the developers from San Diego wanted to do with Sequoia Station in Redwood City. Should we go 17 stories? Probably not. But that is another piece, and that, that, and I don't mean in a negative way, but that encroachment into deeper west Menlo, I think is the only way that we're going to get people to see that it's possible to do it in a way that's attractive and helpful, because that particular piece of land is enormous. And the amount of housing that you could put on that could solve a lot of, you could get 600 units pretty, pretty quickly. But I think the political will is not there. And I think, you know, I go out on a limb saying that, you know, our current council, where folks want to sort of slow everything down, just is going to work against us getting any more housing in this city, let alone, you know, anything else. So I just, you know, wish people would start to think about the land that is there. I think the parking, the parking lots are, they're not the most, they're not optimal. They're, they're not big enough. But that Safeway Shopping Center sure is.
Yeah, and I would say money's not the issue until you're building ELI and VLI units, and you've got to figure out how it is when you're doing 30% and you're looking for subsidies, and you're trying to get a permanent loan, and you're trying, you're building at probably $525,000 per unit, and you have to have soft money because you can't, your numbers simply don't work. So ostensibly, no, on the capital side for the acquisition piece, but once you acquire it, you have to build it. And by definition, ELI and VLI means you're getting, you know, whatever that income level is, $400, $700 per month, and you have to serve as debt on it, which is a $50 million project. You know, you, you need that money, and you need different types of soft money in there. You need city money, county money, and so forth, to have a robust program. You know, it's how, so to your point, where does that dirt come? You know, when I think about Menlo Park, maybe you're smarter than me, but I don't, I don't know where that dirt comes, and we need to get creative, you know, about that. I will also say that in these housing production numbers, there's a focus, obviously, on for rent units. I don't want to forget the for-sale units, because as I've said before, for year, for rent units are awesome for the REIT that builds them and is able to, you know, vacuum up all the disposable income of all the renters. And in an economy where they, where people don't have options to buy homes or for-sale apartments or smaller units, and then they work up, you know, staying a renter in perpetuity is great for the ROI on, you know, the developer community, but it's not so great for people who are trying to build wealth and are doing all the right things and want to buy into units. You know, to the extent any of these zoning upgrades, upzoning initiatives, for instance, in the downtown specific plan, could include incentives for for-sale units, right? And you get for-sale units, and it's tricky because you've got your 10-year tail of liability for the contractor and different things. But it's a worthwhile exercise to think about how we can increase for-sale units, and I'm not even talking about BMR units. Incentivizing the, the production of for-sale units, even market rate units, it's so hard to get out in the market. We see some of those have come recently, but it's 5% of the market, 10% at most. How do we provide homeownership opportunities, even at market rate, for folks who want to buy in, and not creating stacks and stacks and stacks of rentable housing, for rent housing for people who would like to build their own equity? And I think that's a pressing problem. It certainly is something I think we need to pay attention to. So I'll come back to that. Those are my thoughts. Commissioner Tate.
I actually like that idea about for-sale units, like you just mentioned, but you know, of course, with all income levels, you know, for me is important. And I remember when I lived in Las Vegas, apartment complexes definitely went condo, you know, like big, huge complexes, like the ones that Commissioner Kennedy was talking about, driving up and down El Camino. And they all, you know, a great portion went condo because the market shifted and people wanted to purchase. So that definitely is a good, a good option.
Yeah.
If it's available for us.
Well, I, you, it's a carrot or stick, right? And there's only so much profit you can drive out of a pro forma, it's, you incentivize through densification. I mean, we can't get where we're going without densification. And, you know, let's put it where it makes sense, right? I, I'll say something that's going to be wildly unpopular in this, tonight, but I don't know how putting an ADU in Sharon Park or Sharon Heights, which is so far from transportation, helps us. I do know how putting it by the Menlo Park train station helps us because it's by services. And I think that's where, you know, I think that's where our energy needs to be, putting housing where we can support it from a transportation perspective. So, look for any final comments? Seeing none, and seeing that it's 11:20, thank you to all the fellow commissioners, thank you, well, actually, we still have to wrap up with Corinna, but thank you to the housing gurus that we have. Thanks so much. We appreciate that. All right, Ms. Anamai, our last information item.
If I may, yeah, we do need an action from you.
We do need an action?
We do. We just need your recommendation to move this, for city council to approve the report.
Oh, oh.
Is there a recommendation that we will share with city council on the 24th?
Right. And we also had these ruminations about things that we like to see. Were they tracked, or how does that work itself into the cycle?
Steph has taken what you've, we've, we've made notes for internal process as well, and we can look back at everything that was discussed this evening as well. The purpose of tonight is to share the report primarily.
Right.
And then take those comments into further process down the road.
Okay, so the recommendation you're looking for us is to, is to recommend this APR, that's the acronym, right?
Yes, correct, APR.
To move that forward in its current form, and then you'll bowl on some of the recommendations as you, you know, look at the tape or however it comes up.
Right, yeah. The, the recommendation to council will just be for them to approve the motion. If you wanted to add a specific item, you're more than welcome to, and we can include that in your recommendation. However, the, the item that will be before the city council is for them to approve the APR in its form, unless there were changes.
Got it. So no one's really going to see any ruminations we had tonight about what we would like to see differently, correct? Or there will be a separate piece of paper?
We'll, we'll include a summary of the comments.
Okay, okay. So with that in mind, any commissioner want to make sure that they were heard? I think we were all heard. But great. So I'll make a, a motion that we make a recommendation to council to accept the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, the APR. I'm making a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Kennedy diving for a second. So we have a first one, Barnes, second from Kennedy. All in favor, raise your hand. Let the record show Tate, Dorn, Riggs, Barnes, Kennedy, DeCarty, all voting to recommend that city council accept. Thank you.
I thought we were voting, we could go home.
Well, that's, that's a bigger vote, right? That's, that's unanimous as well. Ms. Anamai, I'll look to you to wrap us up.
Yes, I have updates. So the next, for the next planning commission meeting, that will be at the Menlo Park Senior Center at 100 Terminal Avenue. It's a different location. We have one single-family home, 11 Greenwood Place. We have a used permanent architectural control for the West Bay Sanitary District, that's at 700 Marsh Road for their facility. Then we have a study session at the 102110 Terminal Avenue, and that's for future architectural control to demolish the existing ONEDA Community Center, Menlo Park Senior Center, Bellhaven Youth Center, and Bellhaven Pool, and construct a new multi-generational community center and library on the lot. And then we have one study session for 165 Jefferson Drive, that's the Menlo Flats property. And that will include, the proposal includes 158 multifamily dwellings and 14,422 square feet of commercial space.
That's it?
That is it.
That's all you got?
Yep.
Well, there you have it. So get your packet two months in advance. So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned at 11:24 PM. Bam.
I think I missed the. Don't worry, nothing happened.
There's this, this beer commercial that keeps coming up.